Good evening. It is six o'clock PM, Tuesday, October 26, 2021. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our city council chambers, as well as Brady Johnson and our listening audience at WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching through cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Riegenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregel.
Present.
And Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. In a moment, I'm going to ask you to join me for a moment of silence or silent prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiance. But as you do so, I would ask that you keep in your hearts and prayers, Councilman Dennis Seer. Councilman Seer lost his wife, Jeannie, to illness just a few days ago, and we pray for him, we pray his strength, and pray for his family. Her services are going to be held both tomorrow and Thursday. I'd also like for you to ask for prayers for our former township supervisor Frank Abnauer, who lost his wife yesterday due to illness. We pray for him and his family, and just keep them in your hearts and your thoughts, both today and going forward. Please join me for a moment of silence and silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. We don't have any proclamations tonight, so we're going to move into our agenda. Madam Clerk?
We are at the minutes.
Councilmember Euler.
Madam Chairwoman, I approve the minutes of the joint city council town board meeting held October 12, 2021, as printed.
Seconded by Councilman Ruckregel. Questions? Corrections? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Riegenbach? There we go. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at public hearings, and we have two for this evening. Twenty-one dash three-two-one is a public hearing regarding the proposed 2022-2023 biennial budget to be held at City Hall Council Chambers for 19 Fulton Street, Peoria, Illinois.
May I get a motion to open the public hearing? Moved by Councilman Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. We've identified through the cards that were submitted, three individuals that want to speak to our public hearing on the biennial 2022 to 2023 biennial budget. And if there's anyone beyond the three, we'll allow for those individuals to speak as well. The first person is Mr. Justin Ball.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Justin Ball, and I serve on the Peoria Area Chamber of Commerce Board, and am the chair of the Government Affairs Committee. Leadership from the Peoria Area Government Affairs Committee here tonight, the Peoria Area Association of Realtors, BizPAC, and the Peoria Area Chamber of Commerce have created a list to share some concerns and potential opportunities with the council. We're aware that the American Rescue Plan funds are not the end-all solution to our current and future challenges, and that these funds will run out. With the short-term opportunities presented by COVID relief funds, and with an eye towards long-term investments for Peoria, we suggest that the following list of items be investigated by the Peoria City Council that could potentially lead to long-term revenues, economic growth, and greater municipal financial stability. Some of these identified opportunities could allow us to multiply our COVID funds through investments that could solve future city budget issues as well. Our hope is that the investigation of each of these items could be formally discussed at future city council meetings, once the council has requested and gathered sufficient information for discussion and voting. After this evening's meeting, I'll be emailing out a copy to all of you of these budget opportunities for your review. The two that I'd like to speak to this evening is a request to investigate how funds could immediately be invested in city computer infrastructure, including the full package of Tyler softwares and portals, as well as their implementation, so that we could better collect on bills and fees through online payment functions and online forms submissions for city services. We would like to see you evaluate the potential immediate and long-term revenue opportunities for more effective bill and fee collection. My second item to present this evening is to request to evaluate and work with the PDC to changes to reduce costs or improve effectiveness for recycling for our citizens. I'd encourage you to evaluate recycling schedules and options such as pickup frequency and glass collection, and to evaluate our current landfill contract, our old landfill contract prior to its expiration and before moving to the new landfill. At this point, I'll invite my colleagues or the next speakers up, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. The next speaker is Mr. Jeff Kolbus.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and staff. My name is Jeff Kolbus, and I'm here representing the nearly 800-member Peoria Area Association of Realtors. While our organizations are unified in our message to you this evening, each of our groups has identified some specific priorities that we each feel are priority. We appreciate the significance and magnitude of the budget discussions which lie before you, and we appreciate the city reaching out to its citizens for feedback, especially as it relates to the COVID relief funding. I'd like to emphasize that Realtors hold the keys to the American dream of homeownership. Everything that we do is focused on protecting private property rights and to ensure that the dream of homeownership is accessible to everyone. Realtors are community builders dedicated to improve Peoria, the state of Illinois, and our nation. Now more than ever, it is critical for Realtors to speak about the stability that a sound and dynamic real estate market brings to our area. So, the priorities that PAR believes warrant serious consideration by the council in terms of their impact on the budget and the city's fiscal outlook include: First and foremost, we are opposed to the continuation of the public safety pension fee. This fee has been a significant added burden on property owners who now, at the end of 2021, will have the opportunity to see some relief from the added expense. We support the expiration or sunset of this fee at the end of the year. Your constituents have voiced their opinion in your April advisory referenda on the subject of increasing property taxes for pensions. Your constituents said no by an overwhelming majority of nearly 74%. And they said, "No, do not go after higher property taxes for pensions. We ask that you listen to the voters and allow the public safety pension fee to sunset this year." We're not here just to complain. We're also here to give you some ideas and some solutions to reducing your budget as well, too. First, shared services. We encourage you, it's been discussed, talk to Peoria County and other municipalities about combining services and saving money. It's critical now more than ever. Do the due diligence on the Illinois American Water Company. I know what's coming up. Spend the time and stimulus money to conduct a thorough analysis prior to the next deadline. Investigating ways to increase revenues without raising taxes should always be a priority. Proactively encourage and respond to development opportunities. Peoria needs a "how can we make it happen" mentality, not a "this is what the ordinance states" answer to proposals that come before the staff. Maybe it's time to rewrite some of the ordinances and codes to be more competitive with other communities. I will be the first to volunteer to serve on some of those task forces. I think it's time. We do want to thank staff and council for the recent review of certain fees and licenses and regulations applied to businesses, some of which hopefully will be eliminated. The last one is put all taxes and fees related to real property on one bill. Be transparent with your citizens, and save some money in postage while you're doing it. It is confusing to people buying homes who do not know about these fees that ultimately leaves a sour taste in their mouth about, as they're looking at their numbers, these fees come along at a later date. The Peoria Area Association of Realtors works to ensure a healthy business climate in our city. In order to do that, Realtors must be involved in policy discussions such as this budget hearing. We have implications on home that have implications on homeownership and private property rights. We want to work with city officials and staff to ensure that the interests of current and future property owners are considered. So, Realtors have an important stake in how the budget is put together and how the money is being spent. Realtors value and appreciate the relationships they have with you. Realtors are constituents, and perhaps more importantly, we facilitate the entry of new constituents, homeowners, renters, and businesses into the community. The PAR looks forward to engaging with you further on these issues and serving as a resource for any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kolbus. Mr. Chris Crawford is next.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to speak, councilmembers, Madam Mayor. My name is Chris Crawford, lifelong Peorian. I'm here on behalf of the BizPAC of Central Illinois, a organization that supports candidates and issues important to the business community. Peoria really faces a critical, is at a critical juncture here. As I see it, you can be part of its renaissance or manage its decline. I know that that may sound pessimistic, but my colleagues, people around my age who have young children, often talk about how they want to leave Peoria when time permits. I hope that you'll take the necessary steps to make them reconsider those thoughts. With respect to the COVID relief funds, we all know that those funds will run out. They're here for a finite period, they're also restricted in how they can be used. I would ask that you, on behalf of businesses, that you give strong consideration how those funds are spent. I don't think a prudent use of them is to deal back in employees in positions who are otherwise eliminated. Rather, we ought to be looking how to improve the infrastructure around Peoria, and again, telling businesses, as Mr. Kolbus suggested, how can we help you? I think that prudent use of the funds and saying we're going to be disciplined in the use of the funds is paramount. And I mention personnel because having been a former elected official, I know that personnel is the primary driver of your costs, and also involves the toughest decisions that you have to make. Oftentimes, when talking about personnel, you're talking about the future of your friends and colleagues, but likewise, those are where the tough decisions are made, and making Peoria right size for the community it serves. On other issues, I would ask that you give strong consideration to elimination of the townships within the Peoria boundaries. This community has services that, where township services are not needed. It's a holdover from the past, and we all know why it is just simply no longer needed. And it is not enough for any of you to say, "That is not my lane, therefore I can't do anything about it." I know that you're all representatives of the township, you all know the township, you all know how to get rid of it. I would ask that you give strong consideration and at least put this before the voters. It's my understanding the township chairman's paid about $96,000 a year. For what? I mean, that's a hefty salary for anybody. And people in this community don't understand that, I do. I understand what everybody gets paid. I understand how poor pensions can be in this town. It's time the citizens know about it, too, because if we're going to be a city that has open arms to businesses, we need to be prudent with our finances. We need to be different. We need to be a different city in the state of Illinois, in a state that has, frankly, you all know it, when it comes to, is it a friendly place to do business? People say, "No, it's not." On road infrastructure, I would ask that you give strong consideration as you look around and repair our roads, which is much needed in this community, that you give consideration to rethinking how roads and traffic patterns are done. Should you choose to narrow a road, how could you increase a, you know, property taxes by virtue of having more taxable land? Likewise, from a business perspective, attention to the roads is really needed. I drive up and down Pioneer Parkway every day, and I think about all the car dealerships that align that, align that road. I mean, you drive a new car, you get on a Pioneer Parkway, and immediately, you're, it's like driving on the moon. Roads, I've shared with some of you that roads are like the clothes of a person. If they're not in good shape, it's a poor reflection on them, and it's a poor reflection on our city. Again, look to businesses with open arms and a can-do attitude. I think what you'll find is that, not only the businesses that are here, but the businesses that may want to come, will find that Peoria is a receptive place and different from its Illinois counterparts. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the biennial budget? Last call. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the budget? I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by Councilman Ruckregel, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-one dash three-two-two is a public hearing regarding the annexation of a property having the address of 12426 North Klein Road, Dunlap, Illinois.
Do we have anyone that's present that wants to speak to this annexation? Is there anyone that would like to speak to this annexation? Last call. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the annexation of property located at 12426 North Klein Road, Dunlap? I would ask for a motion to, oh, yes. All right. Counsel?
Madam Clerk, did we properly open the hearing for that?
No, we need a motion to open.
I'm sorry.
We need a motion to open the public hearing.
That's a good idea. Councilmember Grab, seconded by Councilmember Jackson. All in favor? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Now, is there anyone who would like to speak to the annexation? Second call. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the annexation? Last call. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the annexation? I would ask for a motion to close the open hearing. Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have one town item. Twenty-one dash three-two-three is a communication from the Town Officials Budget Committee with a request to approve the proposed estimated tax levy of $1,344,725. Estimated tax rate not to exceed .09180 for the town of the city of Peoria.
Councilmember Grab?
Mayor Lee, the township officers met, and we deliberated a great deal over what the levy should be, in terms of where we've been and where we think we're going to be in the future. And with the deliberation that we had, not much of a debate, but just discussion, I feel comfortable in moving to approve this proposed estimated tax levy as outlined.
Seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. And reviewing the agenda item here, it's a proposed property tax increase. The notations indicate that that is due to needing to give out, or potentially needing to give out, more funds for COVID relief. And I would say, you know, at an unprecedented windfall of money that we've received from the federal government, in the city of Peoria, I don't see the necessity for the township to raise property taxes to potentially maybe have more money that they might have to give out in 2022. So I would make a substitute motion to hold the rate at .008, .088, sorry. Thank you.
Is there a second to the substitute motion, seconded by Councilmember Kelly? Member Grab?
Our township assessor, Max Schlaflay, I believe, is here. Max, can you come on up to the lectern there and the microphone and explain why the consensus ended up being what I proposed initially? Because I don't think these trustees had the benefit of that discussion at all.
I don't know if you, many, some of you are new members this year, and if you remember, in some of the ones that are existing, if you remember back last year, you remember us, the township lowered the tax, the levy by 30%. That means we reduced it from, well, approximately .119 down to .087. I don't know if you remember that. And then previous to that, going back to 2017, we lowered it from .149 to, that was the 2017 levy, down to 2018 levy to .119, and that held steady the next year in 2019. And the reason was, is that we, going through our budget and seeing our reserves that were in the budget, we were at approximately 100% of our budget in reserves. And so we felt as a township that we needed to get the reserves down to approximately 50%. So this is the reason why we've lowered the tax levy down over the, you know, from 2017 down to 2020. And we're trying to practice good government and seeing our budget and trying to hold our expenses. If you remember, we have frozen our salaries, the township electeds have frozen their salaries for the last two terms and have not increased it. We have not really, we have not increased our staff, and we tried to really hold our budget. So we've reduced a lot of our expenses down. The previous township supervisor went to a voucher system, and he reduced significantly a lot of the budget down. And so we're able to do a lot of this reducing of our budget. And so what we're proposing is to increase the levy four and a half percent because we know we're going to have to get to a certain back-up to keep our 50% reserves and to get our levy back up probably in the next coming years. It's not going to be immediate. I was thinking, man, we're going to have to get our budget back up to our 2017, well, actually, our 2019 levy. But we felt our accountant felt that we could incrementally raise it up without doing it all in one year, and probably it takes several years to do it, you know, 3% to 4% and still be able to provide the services and not drastically reduce, you know, reduce our reserves down. So that is the reason why the four and a half percent kind of keeps it under the truth in taxation, so, and so we just felt that, you know, we needed to increase it a little bit. And it's only approximately $57,000. That's all we're asking to reduce, increase it up. You know, if it was a significant lot more on our levy, that 57, it'd probably be a lot more money, but it's only $57,000 increase. And so that's what, is there any questions at all? I mean, is that...
Is your question related? Okay. Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you, I know you might not have the exact figures, but can you explain them, what that's going to cover? I mean, it's pretty general in here that you're expecting more requests for funds due to the termination of the COVID money, but can you explain that in more detail?
I can't speak to the general assistance side. That would be Latrina's part of the office. And remember, our tax levy is not our whole budget. It's only a portion of our budget. We get other money from social, from the state and some other areas. We get other money from social, from the state and some other areas from, from the, that comes down to us. So it's not our whole budget, so.
Don't go anywhere, Mr. Assessor. Township Supervisor Larry, can you respond to Counselwoman Jensen's question?
Absolutely. Well, after reviewing our budget, one thing that we noticed is from the pandemic, which we are still currently going through, what we realized is that the need and the necessities as far as our general assistance program is still there and it has not relieved at all. We are still getting about the same amount of people reaching out to us that are needing help, especially, and we've seen an increase with the moratorium being lifted and some other things, you know, that have been factored in. But right now, as of right now, the need is still there. We just haven't seen a decline in people needing less sources. And then right now, there are some other sources that have gotten an incline of, you know, funding coming in, but we all know that's going to come to an end. And it's only going to be temporary. And so with that being said, you know, we still need, you know, those funds there for those that need to rely, that can't get those funding from other resources to still be able to come to the township to really get some relief.
Can I ask a follow-up? So is it about fifty-seven thousand dollars? Is that, does the, the increase cover all of that or will that cover other items as well?
Right now, the increase is to, it's going to cover roughly about that. What we've done on my side and the relief side is we decreased just a little bit of our budget, just so that, you know, we still have the needs there, but we know we couldn't drastically decrease it. But the fifty-seven thousand dollars is to kind of catch up because right now, with the needs that are needed, our reserves are going to not be enough. And so we need to maintain a six-month reserve. So it's just to kind of, you know, get ahead of the game rather than fall behind.
Okay, and then I have one more follow-up.
Yeah, sure.
Did, did you guys, did the township qualify for any COVID relief money? And if so, did you apply and receive any?
Um, we did. The, the township did really receive thirty-eight thousand dollars. And that was used to, that was used towards a rental assistance, which that was alleviated. We used that really quickly.
Okay.
It didn't last very long, just because of the demand for assistance and that.
Okay, and that was it then?
That was all that we received, the township has received.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the, is it questions for the supervisor too? Okay. Counselmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And first off, let me say, I definitely applaud you having the six-month reserves in place. I think it's something very important, as any governmental body does, to make for sure they have the reserves and that is a goal because that helps take away that ability to have to look at budgets at the last minute on there. So very, very good on there. Question on, and I know this came up when, when the, the move was sort of being anticipated and I, I think it's been a good move to the new location. Can you talk a little bit about occupancy costs versus the old location and how much that has increased the budget or expenses on the budget from the new location to the old location?
We're still working on what the whole cost of the move is, but we've spent approximately five hundred thousand. We had that in our, we had, had that in reserves and we used some of that, we used all that money from reserves. And so we've drawn that down, five hundred thousand. And, you know, the, the rent that the city was going to charge us was going to be over forty thousand a year. That was an increase, significant increase. And plus the parking and all that. So to get details what the cost is, you know, we've already paid for the building, so we're not paying rent. And our, all we're basically paying right now is utilities. And you know what utilities are. I mean, that size of a building, it's probably, what, maybe two, two thousand a month, maybe? I mean, for everything, if that. And so it's, we're still, you know, we've only been in it three months, so we don't know the total cost yet for everything. I mean, we've had to take down a tree. I don't know if you guys all knew that, I did relay to Chuck Ray, but we did have our building vandalized a second time. And it's going to, that part of it's going to cost three thousand dollars, just to replace the two front windows. And we've had, you know, our neighbors had, I don't want to go into that whole lot, but we've had our building vandalized, which is really sad. I mean, we've put a lot of money into the building. And so, but we're still working on what the overall cost is going to be. I mean, we're still, because we haven't got in, we're just starting to get average utilities now. And we're only using half the building, so we're, you know, that utilities are what they are. And so you being a business owner, you know what they are, so.
Well, and, and I definitely think that, you know, the ability and access for parking and the location, obviously, you know, that was a consideration. And I think that that, that does pay some dividends there as well. And not maybe for tonight's conversation, but maybe in the future, we could have maybe sort of a, a report back on what those final costs were whenever you get a handle on those. Thank, thank you very much.
Counselmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Schafley, how long is this proposed tax levy for?
How long is it for? This is for next year's tax bill.
So it would only last for that, for that year, sir?
Yeah, this is for the tax bill for, you know, that'll come out in May of next year.
Okay.
So that's for a year. It's, you know, because we're actually, we're levying in our budget that we're in right now, so, so, but, so this is for next year's tax bill.
Okay. And then this might be for Mr. Manager to provide some context on this. Do we have any ability to reallocate any of our American Rescue Plan dollars to support the township in this effort?
Thank you, Councilman. That, that, if the township trustees would make a formal request to the city, then the city council could certainly consider it. There are two separate governments, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one point of clarification. I didn't know if I, Mr. Schlaflay, if I heard you correctly, you said you currently have six months of reserves? And you talked about decreases from 2017 to 2019 to get your reserves to fifty percent, but now the need for the tax levy to get it back up to fifty percent? Where are you at right now in, with your reserves? You're not at fifty percent?
No, we're, we're still over the reserves, but we're still, we're anticipating we're going to be drawing down to about four hundred thousand because we're having to take money from our reserves to cover our budget. And so at the end of this budget year and going into next year, remember, we're, this is for the future, we're still in this budget, so we're spending money down. We're anticipating probably we're going to have to take another four hundred thousand approximately out of the reserves to cover our existing budget. And so that's why going beyond next year, we're asking for incremental increases because it's going to come to a point, we're going to go way below the, we're going to go below the six months reserves. So we're trying to, you know, do some forward thinking. I know it's kind of hard to, you know, grasp that, but we're just trying to anticipate, you know, going below budget and not having enough money.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. The township trustees voted to buy a building and remodel a building during a pandemic and use reserves. At no point during that discussion was raising property taxes on the citizens in the township to continue to have six months' worth of reserves in the bank. And I, I, as a township trustee, can't stomach the idea of raising property taxes on our township citizens to keep six months in the bank, a half of a year in the bank, when many of them do not have a half of a year in the bank. So whether it's pennies, dollars, or hundreds, I will continue to support my substitute motion to hold the rate at point zero-eight-eight. Thank you.
Counselmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had one more question for, I think, the, either the assessor or the supervisor. It's probably for, for the assessor. Doesn't the state law require townships, they have a limit on the maximum amount they can hold in reserves? Is that correct?
I don't think there's a, there's a, some, some townships hold a hundred, you know, they're a hundred percent or more from what I've seen. And we, we were getting up to that level for some reason. Ever since I've been in office, I've noticed that we've had, you know, too much in our reserves. And finally, we've done, we've dealt with it the last forty years, trying to draw it down, get it to a more realistic number. And I don't believe there is a, it's just a good counting practice to have reserves. I think the city tries to follow that same thing. And so I don't think it's a, it's just a good accounting, especially good government to have the reserves.
No, I understand that part. I just thought that there was something, perhaps Corporation Council might be able to answer that with regards to on the maximum.
I am not the township attorney, but I can say that there have been court cases for townships I used to represent where there is not a unlimited amount of cash reserves that can be held. There is a cap, and I want to say it's around two hundred percent of what the operating expenses were annually for like the last three years, but that's off the top of my head.
Thank you.
May I might add, it is recommended that the township has a minimum of six, six months' reserve.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I applaud the efforts of, of the township. And I think it does some very important work that really, that really maybe our larger city may not really realize that, that happens within the township. One of the conversations that really came up whenever we talked about the need for a new building was what it was going to do to the ultimate tax, overall tax rate. And at that time, not only from, from the current then township supervisor, but also from many members of the township board here, they said that it won't affect it, that that was not going to be an option about a tax increase coming back into play. And that was a big discussion that we had here on the floor. And I think that's an important piece that we forecasted and some of us were maybe on the outside of, I think, the popular belief that we would be right here where we are, which is asking for an increase. Maybe it is one year, but from my experience, very few times do levies go down over time. I think this may be one of the exceptions when we look at the past where it has gone down, and I think that it was done for the right reasons. Also too, tonight, we've not talked about cutting our township salaries. And I think before we would look at a tax increase, a tax levy increase, that that ought to be the discussion versus putting on the backs of the taxpayers one more levied increase. Tonight, I won't be supporting that. I think that while this is proposal, I, I think was well thought out. For myself, it is not something that I can, can approve. So thank you.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, I would echo many of the comments that have already been said, that fifty-seven thousand dollars might not sound like a lot of money, but when you're talking about the men and women of Peoria Township who are going to be paying that, I think we, we need to take a pause. It's just a little troubling that our first instinct is always to raise taxes. And I, I would suggest, Councilman Allen's suggestion is that perhaps we, we mentally set aside some additional relief funds for the township if that should be needed. That's exactly what they're there for, is for COVID relief. So I would be supporting the substitute motion to keep the, the levy in check. And then knowing that there's, there's, we'll, we'll charge the township officials to review the budget, fifty-seven thousand dollars is a doable number, I would think. But if the worst case comes up by spending these COVID dollars judiciously, there would be the potential for relief if the city council agrees with the township board. And I'm smiling as I say that since you can't see it, so. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. We can see it in your eyes.
Can I say something really quickly?
Sure.
I know, I understand that, you know, fifty-seven thousand dollars is, it's a sizable amount of money. But coming from twenty, twenty-twenty, last year, that levy was dropped thirty percent. It was far more than fifty, fifty-seven thousand dollars. We are still, you know, a year ago, we didn't know where we would be, you know, here within, you know, during the pandemic. We had no idea. We see now, you know, it was a little bit of a letup during the summer, but now we are still in the midst of it. Know the numbers aren't what they used to be, but we are going into another winter season. And so we are anticipating, you know, being prepared and making sure that we are ahead of the game instead of trying to play catch-up. Unfortunately, a little bit of that is being done, but we did not know where we were going to be. I wasn't a part of the conversation last year, and I know that's not, you know, I can't really say exactly to what extent, you know, all of the thought process was, but I think we do really need to take into consideration where we're headed. This is not, you know, the services that the township provides for the community. And this is still money going back into the community. This is not money that's being thrown out and, you know, in the air and disappearing. And I know contrary to what some may believe, you know, this is actually going to a good cause. This is going to help the people within the township which we all live in.
Supervisor, when it was cut thirty percent, how much was, approximately how much was that cut?
It was about five hundred thousand dollars is what it was decreased from last year.
Okay.
So an increase of fifty-seven thousand dollars is significantly different than, you know, it's not a huge ask, if you will, you know, down from the five hundred thousand dollar decrease from last year.
Thank you. Councilmember Velpula?
I see there is a, there is a linear decrease in the rate from point one-four-three to point zero-eight-eight from in the past five years, like 2017 to 21. And I heard that you say, you know, there will be an incremental increase. So do you have a reference point? Where do you think it stopped or is it a one-time deal of fifty-seven thousand? I, I, I mean, please correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm understanding wrong. But what I understand was there will be a linear increase every year in the tax levy. Is that right?
What was the question again?
So now you, so the proposal now is to say we raise it to point zero-nine-one-eight-zero, the rate, right? But is it a one-time increase or you, you are expecting incremental increase every year? That's what I, I was not sure. If it is only one-time fifty-seven thousand, that's fine, but every year are you trying to increase more to get it to where we are at 2017? Is that what you expect the reference point is?
We're trying to, what, the goal of what we're trying to accomplish right now is to not deplete our reserves. If we do not slowly increase our reserve or the money coming in, we will deplete our reserves.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, you can go ahead.
Sorry. Complete it. Please complete it. You're saying something.
What, what we're, what we're really, eventually, we need to get back to the 2019 levy. To cover our existing budget, we need to get back to the 2019 levy, which was one million, seven-eighty-six-three-thirty. And, you know, but so we're not going to try and do it all in one year. That's why I say we need to incrementally raise it back up. I know of no other government body that's done what we've done the last couple of years. You know, reduced, I mean, actually, the last four years, we've reduced a 42% levy. And last year, we did it in 30%. I don't think anybody's ever done that. And, you know, we didn't, we weren't wasting money or anything like that. We, we did it 30% last year.
So in simple terms, we are going to increase, you're proposing to increase, sorry, incrementally increase every year to offset what was lost? Or to maintain, maintain what you're going to maintain, your reserve fund? So for maintaining that, you have to increase incrementally every year until we reach a .14, which is, which is what it is on in the year 2018, correct? That's exactly what you're saying?
Well, our goal is to get the levy back to where it was in 2019. That's a comfortable number. You know, 2017, I, you can tell where it was at and where it started to decrease. But 2019 was the number that would probably be most appropriate for us to be at. And we're just trying to get at that level just to maintain, you know, the budget as far as the township. And another thing also, might I add? The numbers that we're looking at and, you know, that, in the last year, not only did we decrease our budget by a half million dollars, we purchased a building, there was a lot of dipping into the reserves as well. And there was a lot going on. I kind of walked into the tail end of that. That's just what I inherited coming into the position. But 0.0880 is not where we want to stay. Like I said, the huge factor into all of this is, you know, the results of the pandemic and how it's affected a lot of families and a lot of households. And that, I mean, I think we really, really need to take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you tell us at what percentage the reserves are now versus operations? Right, right now?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I can get back with you and get that number for you. Right now, I believe it is...
I think it's close to 100% right now. Close.
Okay. And you don't want it to fall below 50, right?
Correct.
But we're still in the middle of our budget. So we're anticipating, we're going to have to draw more money out of the reserves this year and then same the next year too, the following years too, till we get back up.
Okay.
It's kind of hard to grasp right now, but, you know, we had too much, basically, we had too much money. We've drawn down some of it with the building. And we're going to use up about $400,000 out of the reserves to cover the budget going into the end of this fiscal year, which is in, end of March.
Which will bring it under, it will bring it under 100% for sure.
Okay. And I think that part of the reasons, part of the reason that things are slipping at this point is because of a one-time health emergency, which has ramifications throughout the economy. So I think that information is good for your town trustees here to consider in having perhaps the city make sure that you stay properly solvent in the midst of an emergency. I wouldn't want to make permanent, which tax rates tend to be, I wouldn't want to make permanent something that's based on today's emergency. So my thought is that I'd like to go along with Councilman Euler's motion. But also as a trustee, I'm open to the city helping out the township during this emergency without an increase in taxes.
Councilman Kelly?
Yes.
In response to that, the $38,000 that was received this year, but it wasn't during this fiscal budget that we're currently in. So that was the only federal money that the township had received. But that was in the fiscal year that hadn't started, I mean, in the fiscal year previous to the one that we're currently in.
I, I understand. I'm talking about money coming from city of Peoria. So, thank you. And thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Grab?
Supervisor Schlafly, would you please remind the trustees that this levy is not set in stone, that over the years, it's been adjusted? That this is nothing new?
Yeah, we have not frozen our, our tax rate. Like I said, I'll just go back to 2016. It was, the tax rate was .14895 on a tax levy of 2.3 million. In 17, the tax rate was .14934 with a tax levy of 2,343,873. And then in 2018, the tax rate was .11951 with a tax levy of 1,831,893. And then in 2019, the tax rate was .11916 with a tax levy of 1,786,330. And then last year, on the 2020 levy, the tax rate was .08785 on a tax levy of 1,286,818. So we're just proposing to raise it $57,000 to 1,338, or 1,344,725 with a tax rate of .0918.
So we...
So the tax rate has not stayed the same. We've tried to practice good government and, you know,
adjust our tax rate and levy. I'm afraid our trustees do not give themselves enough credit for the brilliant, and it was absolutely brilliant, move that was undertaken by Supervisor Frank Abnauer to not remain under a parking deck downtown on Adam Street and not to pay close to $40,000 a year in rent. Big difference between continuing to bleed the taxpayers for rent and actually buying a dedicated facility that's visible to the least among us financially who need help. Trustees, you made a good decision. These are not bleeding heart liberals here, nor have we had township officers that have been that at any time. So if it makes some of you feel really good about this, and you go with the substitute motion, which I think is a mistake, you are reducing the reserves beyond where we would like it to be. And this will set the stage toward future adjustments that will have to be made. The other thing that I would say is, as a liaison to the township offices, a very good case would need to be made as to why any of the funds that currently are held by the city should go to the township. It's called accountability. We would have to have a case which can be made as to why that should be the case, why we would need to take some money, manager, you mentioned this, and give it to the township offices. Is that what you were suggesting? That if the township officers were to make that case to the trustees? The city council sits also as trustees. Tonight, as we discuss this, we're trustees. They could make a request for some of the money that we have. Correct?
It is certainly plausible for the township board to make a request of the city council for funds to be transferred from one unit of government to another.
But that hasn't happened yet.
That is correct.
And if it were to happen, I know, because I know you two, I know you'll make a very good case or you won't bring it forward. So I hope tonight the substitute motion is defeated unless it makes a lot of you feel really good. But I, I think the recommendation's right on target. We need to keep those reserves where they are. We have all kinds of vagaries coming in terms of where we're going to be money-wise. We've had this levy go up and down. We've tried to calibrate it all the time with an eye to what is responsible for our taxpayers while taking care of the poor in our community? Maybe we've forgotten that's why we have this. Maybe we've just plain forgotten that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Chairperson.
Thank you, Assessor Schlafly and Supervisor Larry. Appreciate your comments, feedback. We, Madam Clerk, can you read the substitute motion?
So it was a substitute motion to approve the proposed estimated tax levy at a rate not to exceed .0880.
Okay. That's the substitute motion. I would ask that you cast your ballots. Motion passes. Three nays. Ali, Grab, Jackson. We also have an original motion on the floor, right?
No, once you vote on the substitute motion, the original motion is...
Okay, good, thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. 21-324 is a communication from the mayor and Corporation Council with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency. 21-325 is a communication with a request to approve a sole source emergency purchase from Traffic Control Corporation in the amount of $16,481. 21-326 is a communication for the following. A, to approve an agreement renewal with Hare Petroleum for one additional year ending October 31, 2022, to provide fuel delivery services, large loads, for the city of Peoria at .015 cents per gallon over the low rack price from the Daily Opus Oil Price Information Service report plus freight at .0025 cents per gallon. And B, to approve an agreement renewal with Agland FS for one additional year ending October 31, 2022, to provide fuels, delivery services, small loads for the city of Peoria at .09 cents per gallon over the low rack price from the Daily Opus Oil Price Information Service report. 21-327 is a communication with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to approve a resolution approving an annexation agreement for property identified as PIN number 0919100001 with a temporary address of 12426 North Klein Road, located west of Allen Road, east of Klein Road, south of Cedar Hills Road, and north of property identified as PIN number 0919100002 Dunlap, Illinois. 21-328 is a communication from the city manager and finance director with a request to adopt an ordinance providing for the issuance of taxable general obligation refunding bonds in an aggregate amount not to exceed $27 million of the city of Peoria, Peoria County, Illinois, to provide for the refunding of certain outstanding bonds of the city and providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof, and authorizing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection therewith. 21-329 is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds in an aggregate amount not to exceed $17 million of the city of Peoria, Peoria County, Illinois, to provide for the refunding of certain outstanding bonds of the city and providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, authorizing the sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof, and authorizing the execution of an escrow agreement in connection therewith. 21-330 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Housing Commission with a request to concur of Regina Morgan. 21-291 is a communication from Mayor Ali with a request to withdraw the appointment of Honorable Mayor Rita Ali to the redistricting committee. 21-292 is a communication from Mayor Ali with a request to withdraw an appointment of First District Councilmember Denise Jackson to the redistricting committee. 21-293 is a communication from Mayor Ali with a request to withdraw the appointment of Second District Councilmember Charles Grab to the redistricting committee. 21-294 is a communication from Mayor Ali with a request to withdraw the appointment of Third District Councilmember Timothy Regenbach to the redistricting committee. 21-295 is a communication from Mayor Ali with a request to withdraw an appointment of Fourth District Councilmember Andre Allen to the redistricting committee. 21-296 is a communication from Mayor Ali with a request to withdraw an appointment of Fifth District Councilmember Dennis Seer to the redistricting committee. And 21-331 is to approve the committee report policy session from the October 12, 2021 Joint City Council Town Board meeting regarding redistricting in response to the 2020 census results. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would just remind everyone that the request to withdraw individuals from the redistricting committee is due to our decision to handle redistricting as a committee of the whole. Is there any items that you want to remove from consent? Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 21-327.
Councilmember Kelly?
I had the same withdrawal, so...
Okay. Thank you. Member Velpula?
21-326.
Can you speak closer to the mic? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
21-326. 21-326.
86, okay. 326. Thank you.
So the agenda says that we are appro, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Which item? No, none?
It was just 326.
Yeah, just 326.
I'm sorry. Pardon me, I didn't hear you.
I just wanted to discuss on 21-326.
Okay, you want to discuss it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make sure I have the right one. Are there any other items to remove from consent? Can I get a motion to approve the rest of the items on consent? Moved by Councilmember Regenbach, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Twenty-one dash three-two-six is a communication from the city manager, public works director, fire chief, and finance director with a request for the following: A) to approve an agreement renewal with Hair Petroleum for one additional year ending October 31, 2022, to provide fuel delivery services, large loads, for the city of Peoria at .015 cents per gallon over the low rack price from the daily OPUS Oil Price Information Service report, plus freight at .0025 cents per gallon; and B) to approve an agreement renewal with Agland FS for one additional year ending October 31, 2022, to provide fuel delivery services, small loads, for the city of Peoria at nine cents per gallon over the low rack price from the daily OPUS Oil Price Information Service report.
Two separate items, right? Okay. Councilmember Velpula?
So this is an agreement for one additional year. So that means I'll be going to solicit invitations for the next year as well?
So the fuel bids, we're asking for a one-year extension or a one-year approval of these contracts. We would go back out on the street, the purchasing department, with the said departments that are listed here, and solicit proposals next year, probably around the same time again, so that we can come back to you with the fuel prices. The intent behind this is that we're looking at kind of a base wholesale rate plus an escalator, and that's the rationale that's laid out in the council communication for both large-load diesel deliveries and the small-load diesel deliveries, or gasoline deliveries that we have, so.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Okay. Can I get a motion on this item? Anyone? Moved by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any other comments? Please cast your ballots. Passes unanimously. Clerk?
We need a motion on item B as well, please.
Oh. Councilmember Jensen, item B, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Please cast your ballots on item B. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-one dash three-two-seven is a communication from the city manager and director of community development with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to approve a resolution approving an annexation agreement for property identified as parcel identification number 0919100001, with a temporary address of 12426 North Klein Road, located west of Allen Road, east of Klein Road, south of Cedar Hills Road, and north of property identified as PIN number 0919100002 Dunlap, Illinois.
Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pulled this for the opportunity to vote against it. As we talk about urban sprawl and the growth of the city, I just don't understand the logic of annexing 30 acres or putting an agreement in place to annex 30 acres in a non-contiguous portion of our community. I thought I was back on the county board for a minute, reading that they want to subdivide this into three 10-acre parcels without connection to a public sanitary sewer, which is also very concerning to me. So without having been briefed on the backstory, I'm not going to be able to support this. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. You control powers outside of the boundaries of the city of Peoria. Within a mile and a half of your property, of the boundaries of the city of Peoria, you have what's called extraterritorial jurisdiction, in which you have to approve subdivisions of lots of this size in order to come in. And what we have traditionally done on properties like this is we have required an annexation agreement in order for, if we ever become contiguous to it, that the property would come into the city of Peoria. So in this instance, simply because we have this extraterritorial jurisdiction, staff brought this item forward because the property owner consented with the idea of coming into the city if, at any point in time in the future, they become adjacent to the city of Peoria. That may not happen now or for the period of 20 years in which this annexation agreement would exist, but that's the rationale behind it. You have that control outside of the borders of the city for a mile and a half in jurisdiction, so that's the reason why.
I recall a similar situation like this not that long ago. How often have we done this, or how many times?
It's been very rare recently. We haven't done very many annexations. We just recently did one that was in Medina Township, and that was approved by council here probably about a month ago.
Member Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think there is a default position on annexations, that they're just good. And I'm not sure that that is so. We have many instances in our city and in many, many other cities where annexed property looks like a freebie on the first day, and ultimately, it costs more than it's worth. We have a city that is a little bit, just a shade bigger than Boston, Massachusetts. And they seem to be able to have a really good, viable, heavily-populated city in the same area we have. We keep expanding and expanding and expanding. We have more roads to take care of, no more people to take care of. And I think it is a kind of a... At best, it's a break-even game, and I think oftentimes, it's a losing game. I suspect that this will pass, but like Councilman Riegenbach, I wanted to go on record with these comments and also to oppose the annexation. I don't understand the benefit to our people of annexing these 30 acres. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Manager, do you want to comment?
Yes, this is just an agreement that says that if we ever become adjacent to this property, they will become part of the city. If in 20 years, they are not adjacent to the city of Peoria, they will not become part of the city of Peoria.
I understand that. Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think based on your response, I might know the answer, but I'm wondering why we're making an exception to the requirement that you have to have sewer systems. I know Councilman Riegenbach touched upon that a little bit, but I mean, I thought that was a requirement for anybody that comes to the city and proposes an annexation. I mean, that, I believe, has been the past practice. So I'm wondering why we're making an exception here.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I believe with this particular tract, as long as it remains three 10-acre tracts individually, it would not be required. If they are further subdivided, however, then connection to the public sanitary system would be required.
Okay. And at this point, you're... As the city managers pointed out, we're not annexing this property. It's just making an agreement with the owners that if they become adjacent, they will annex into the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments, questions? Yes.
The one... I think that both Councilman Kelly and Riegenbach have raised legitimate concerns, but I guess I would like us to give a professional courtesy to the Fifth District Councilperson isn't here. If maybe we defer this until the next meeting that he's here, because I don't know what his position is on this, and I would feel more comfortable voting, you know, if I decide to vote against it with hearing...
Make a motion to that effect?
I so move.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal to defer this until Councilman Seer. We don't know that he's going to be here at the next meeting.
How about to the next meeting that Councilman Seer is present?
Okay. All right. It's moved and seconded. Defer till the next meeting that Councilman Seer is present. Councilman Ruck Regal? I was doing pretty good.
You were doing really good. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Riegenbach?
Just as a point of order, can we be that vague in the deferral? Or do we need to defer to two weeks to the next regular business meeting? And then if he's not there, defer it again? Would that be more appropriate?
Do you want to amend that?
It would probably be more appropriate for it to be two weeks. And then we can defer it again if need be.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And the second? Okay. Very good. All right. This is... The motion is to defer for two weeks to the next business meeting. Please cast your ballots. This is unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. Twenty-one dash three-three-two is a communication with a request to receive and file a presentation by Mark Fenton, a national public health planning and transportation consultant regarding complete streets and active transportation. And on your desk, you have a copy of the presentation.
Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city is a partner of what is now called the Active People, Healthy Illinois, Greater Peoria Committee. And this is a group that has been meeting over the past nearly 18 months to be able, as part of a select group of cities across the country, to really dive deeper into complete streets and really how that not only affects our health of a community, but the equity of a community as well. And we've been doing some great work on that, partnering with other participants within our region here in our city. And today, we would have a presentation by Mark Fenton, who is well-known across this country as one of the preeminent speakers on this. He was actually one of our leaders throughout this process. He's an MIT-trained engineer with a BS and MS degrees and nationally-recognized public health, planning, and transportation consultant, specializing with subject matters as an expert for the CDC, working with hundreds of communities across the country and funded to reduce obesity and increase physical activity and public health at the same time. Course director for the CDC's National Walkability Action Institute. And I think that, as many of us have had these conversations over the past couple of years, this presentation will really wrap up a lot of those concepts together, and I think we'll all also walk away with some new information.
I can't wait.
And we will start with a small introduction video that is not very long, and then we will turn it over to Mark.
Thank you. And thank you for being out today as we start a two-day pop-up demonstration of complete streets.
How do we kind of look at bringing back the vibrancy of our communities in a healthy way? We're demonstrating what a redesign of the street could look like. So instead of putting up a picture or talking about an abstract idea, they can literally be involved in it. This is a project that came out of an effort called the Walkability Action Institute that's ultimately sponsored by the Centers for Disease Control Prevention. It's really about trying to promote active living, active transportation, right? So if it's not easy to walk or convenient, you're less likely to do it. In March, we had a good idea that we wanted to do demonstration and started putting together what kind of materials we would need and what partners we'd like to bring.
Who you see behind me are members of the Greater Peoria Family YMCA Teen Reach Program. They've been working with a national consultant, Mark Fenton, who's been virtually meeting with them.
But what do you get to see when I make a chart like this? What jumps out to you?
Teaching them about what makes streets safe for pedestrians and bicyclists and all users. And they have literally been down to the site to collect data on the street.
But does that tell the whole story?
I think this is a milestone in the kind of trajectory of the community.
There's just paint and tape, but it can make a huge difference on how people view themselves on the street.
We know what it does for a community. It can actually pull a community together. It can make a healthier community. It can bring equity within a community. And it can actually decide that this community matters.
Awesome. Welcome, Mr. Fenton.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, for welcoming me tonight. I really, really appreciate it. And I don't want anybody's feelings to be hurt, but the highlight of my day was that I got to go to the Peoria Y. I had only interacted with the kids through Zoom until today. So nobody offended, but it was really great to get to see them. It's only a little bit less great to be able to join you this evening, if I may. Great energy, and I was blown away by how much they took out of it. I'd like to conclude my comments with actually a little review of what they learned and what they shared with me today, if I may. And that's in your handouts. But I think my job is to remind you of the good work you're already doing around complete streets and active transportation and urge you... Note that I've been here before. This is from a walk audit that we did over by Harrison Elementary back in 2019, pre-pandemic, that image. And I've got to give a nod to Kristi Philby, who is with the State Alliance of YMCA. She was the woman that you saw on that video. And they funded much of my time and opportunity to participate, so we should acknowledge their support. They also bought a lot of those materials that you now have and could do more of these demonstrations with. So those vertical delineators and some of those materials that were used to create that temporary change on Main Street there. You now have those available to do more. And I guess my most important point would be that, as you look at these images, this is some of the work you've been doing around complete streets. If you look at the images, places you've done fairly elaborate things, like creating a protected bicycle lane on a bridge, or the less costly things, like simple vertical flexible posts and signs to make safer pedestrian crossings or temporary curb extensions. They are, or for that matter, the back-end parking that's right in front of this building, which is much safer for bicyclists because you don't have cars backing into the street. You have cars driving forward into the street. Those are all elements of the complete streets work you're doing that I'm hoping you, as leaders in the community, will really institutionalize because of the great benefits to the community. I want to acknowledge that specifically, a group, you see the names here and on your handouts, took part in a course that I teach for the Centers for Disease Control. Notably, this is a competitive application. So the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the region submitted a team and was selected from many applicants across the country. Peoria was represented there. You have vaulted yourself as a community into a special class of communities that are giving great thought to the importance of this work and institutionalizing it. As part of that, you even looked at walk audits of your Main Street district and the potential opportunities, and therefore, that was part of the genesis of the video that you just saw. So four quick things I'd like to speak to. The health benefits of more complete streets and the opportunity to institutionalize that were what we call the triple bottom line, which are the economic, environmental, and health benefits of that work, and share those results that the students gathered. The quick glimpse into the public health piece of the story is simply this. We know everybody should be physically active. The Surgeon General, the Centers for Disease Control, would tell us if every adult could average 30 minutes of physical activity a day, if every child could average an hour, it would reduce our risk for all of the things that kill us prematurely: cardiovascular disease, type 2 diabetes, high blood pressure, osteoporosis, clinical depression, dementia and old age, a growing list of cancers. That's the happy news. And importantly, it doesn't have to be structured exercise. As you can see in these images, these are people that were just walking to school, riding a bike, doing errands on foot in Peoria. That counts. It doesn't have to be going to the gym. I think it's really important to recognize that. Sadly, we don't get that. On average, maybe 5% of adults meet those guidelines, as many as 20% of youth meet those recommendations. We have an awful lot of screen time in our lives, but also, we built transportation systems where the notion of walking, bicycling, taking... systems where the notion of walking, bicycling, taking transit, getting physical activity a part of daily life is much less common now. That image in the lower right from the Harrison School, that was pre-pandemic. That was typical traffic at an elementary school in your city, as it is across the country. We see many, many kids being driven rather than walking and bicycling. Those numbers have changed dramatically over the last 30 or 40 years. And we also know what it takes to create environments where more routine physical activity happens, where people tend to walk and bike more. You need a variety of destinations in proximity, things to actually walk and bike to. You need a network of facilities like sidewalks and bicycle lanes, the things you see on complete streets. And it needs to be safe and inviting for all users, people of all ages and abilities, of all incomes and races, people with disabilities, pushing a stroller in a wheelchair, visually impaired or blind. Those three criteria have to be in place, and Complete Streets really asks for that. I want to add that we've seen a heightened awareness around this challenge over the last year and a half of upheaval in this country. And I'm going to suggest there are three major upheavals. Certainly COVID, we've all talked about the pandemic, we see how it affects us every day. But I'm also going to suggest that the social reckoning around institutional racism in this country and the Black Lives Matter movement, and the heightening awareness around climate change and its impacts, its direct impacts, not long-term. Fires in the West, coastal inundations in the East, flooding across the middle of America with unusual storm events. All three of those would benefit from the outcomes that come from more complete streets. Let me say that again. The prescription I just gave to create settings where people walk and bicycle more would benefit in all three of these areas. Let me make a brief case for that and remind you why it's so important. That picture is of Interstate 93 in Boston, about a week, I'm sorry, a month after the shutdown last spring. That road would normally be a parking lot at rush hour on a weekday. It's empty, basically. And the result, the pictures on the right show you air quality on the top of the four preceding years, average air quality, and on the bottom, last spring. So once we got all those vehicles off the roads, we saw these dramatic increases. And if you look closely at the map, everywhere from Detroit through Pittsburgh and Cleveland, up the East Coast, from DC to Boston, dramatic reductions in emissions, both nitrous oxides, but also greenhouse gases, associated with that much less driving and walking. So to be crystal clear, one of the very clear benefits of complete streets, if we can have people shifting their behavior and occasionally choosing to walk, bike, and take transit instead of drive, dramatic environmental benefits. By the way, they are not just long-term. The reduction in paved surface area, if we have to create less surface parking, for example, at retail areas, dramatically reduces stormwater runoff. So if I'm a public works director, anything I can do to reduce the amount of stormwater runoff generated by giant parking lots is to my great benefit. Second, of course, the COVID pandemic. What we learned during the pandemic was the people most at risk for adverse outcomes were people with comorbidities. So all those things that I talked about associated with the sedentary lifestyle, if you are overweight or obese, cardiovascular disease, type 2 diabetes, high blood pressure, you are much more likely to have a very adverse outcome if you got COVID. So before we had the vaccinations, the best public health recommendations I could make to somebody would be, of course, social distancing, mask wearing, hygiene, all of that, and stay physically active to maintain cardio-respiratory fitness so that you reduce your risk of an adverse outcome. We're saying here that routine daily physical activity had both chronic disease and infectious disease benefits. People were encouraged to go outside and stay active. You know that. You saw people out on the street in neighborhoods walking. Cities like Denver, the picture in the top right, actually created slow streets, closed-off streets, people widened sidewalks, they did temporary reconstruction to create places where people could stay physically active at safe social distances. One other thing we learned during this time, during the Black Lives Matter movement of last year, lots of people talked about the institutional racism associated with law enforcement and things like that. I believe the subtle piece that my discipline, land use, planning, and transportation, realized were the institutional racism that was associated with transportation and land use decisions of recent decades. It was shown to us in spades, a bright light was shown on that when we looked at death rates to COVID during the pandemic and saw how much they disproportionately affected people of color, specifically Black and Hispanic people in our society. They were dying at rates higher than their proportion of the population. Interestingly enough, that is something that people in land use, transportation, and planning were not at all surprised to see, because we had known that we had used, if I may, policies associated with institutional racism in our land use and transportation decisions for decades that had been affecting, for example, pedestrian death rates. You can see from this graphic that people of color suffered disproportionate death as pedestrians, and it begins to ask the question, is that because of where they live? Is not this a case where our ZIP code is a better determinant of our life expectancy than our genetic code? Because the neighborhoods where this is more likely to happen, well, often the neighborhoods that experienced redlining, or where we didn't invest, where there was disinvestment in the transportation infrastructure, where in many cities, the picture on the right, I grew up near Rochester, New York, so I have neighborhoods in our community. We've seen this all over the country, and we've seen cities revisiting the transportation decisions that created that disinvestment in those neighborhoods. The reason I use Rochester, New York is because it's a kind of a peer community size-wise. It's seen the same economic challenges that Peoria has, so it's not an irrelevant, it's a northern, you know, similar climate industrial city. And notably, they made a decision about that trench highway through the city. It's called the inner loop there. It attaches to the Interstate 90. And they said, you know, let's develop a vision for what this could become. The picture on the top right here showed them the idea of filling the trench, taking the highway out, filling the trench, and putting an intermodal corridor up top where people could walk and bike and drive, and where they did mixed-use redevelopment, including affordable housing. To their great credit, these next two photos show you them having actually done so. So Rochester, New York is investing, and complete streets, if I may be so bold, are central to this redesign. They believe that those streets will only be beneficial if they not only remove the highway, but make a street where everybody, all ages, all abilities, all incomes, all races, can safely walk and bike to their destinations, where kids can walk to school, where parents can get to their jobs, where essential workers can still navigate the community even if they don't own a car. People with physical disabilities can still navigate. I believe this is the model, and I believe it's the direction Peoria is heading, but I want to implore you to do that consciously. Don't kind of go there slowly and incrementally. Make the decision that that is the future that you want. And here's why. Because the third piece of this triple bottom line, so I've talked about environmental health, I've talked about public health, is economic health. And we're seeing increasingly, communities that are investing in this are seeing healthier economies, healthier people, healthier physical environments, and it's often referred to as people, prosperity, and planet. And I'll say that there's very compelling evidence. So I was interested that a gentleman from the National Association of Realtors here, this is their publication, it's called On Common Ground. It comes out twice a year, in which they look at what are driving factors in realty, particularly in residential realty. And again and again, they recognize that people want walkable neighborhoods, that as they think about buying a home, they'd like to be able to walk to their child's school, access a trail, walk to a corner store or a coffee shop, right? Be in a community where they can take it. I intentionally stay at the Mark Twain when I'm able to visit, because I can walk to coffee shops, I can walk to brew pubs, to restaurants. I believe I'm taking advantage, and by the way, supporting local businesses, not just international chains, in it. And I believe, boy, I walk down Adams Street, and I can feel the transition from where it's a four-lane corridor, right, one-way road, to where you've already done complete streets on Western Adams, where it goes down to two lanes, it's a two-lane road. It's dramatic, and of course, you see the economic rebirth happening there. But these are the desirable places. The National Association of Home Builders and Realtors are saying people want to buy in these places. This white paper essentially says not only that, but young people, as they graduate from college, as they begin their professional careers, want to live in these kinds of communities. Indeed, as I think of graduates of ICC and Bradley, and where they want to start their business, or where they want to start their careers, they could make a decision to go to Bloomington or Chicago, or if they're in high tech, they might want to go to Silicon Valley. Why don't they want to stay here in Peoria? What do you need to do? Well, one of the things we know, and they show data in this white paper, that if you look at people in the 16 to 24-year-old age range, they are more likely to want to ride a bicycle and take transit and drive less. They are less likely to be car owners than they historically were. Get this, they are less likely to have a driver's license than historically. The graph on the bottom shows that driver's licensure among 16 to 24-year-olds peaked in the 1980s and has dropped dramatically such that only about 60% of kids in that age range. I'm not saying kids today don't drive. I'm just saying they have a different set of priorities, and they want to live in the kinds of communities where they have transportation options. And if you want to compete in that landscape, if you want businesses to locate here that want to recruit and retain those employees, these are all factors that matter. One last point on the economics. These are a couple of really compelling studies, done very, very well, that essentially lay out what happens specifically on complete streets. We are seeing increased retail activity, increased sales tax revenue, increased employment along corridors that have slowed traffic, that have invited users in all modes, not just people to drive to those destinations, but people to walk. Again, when I went for my walk down to the Zion Coffee Shop, I indeed walked down to Zion Coffee Shop, right? It invited me to do that, the very design of the street did. And we're seeing a growing body of evidence from even peer-sized communities that complete streets are part of the economic engine. And I would ask you to think about the streets where you've done the work here and how the retail feels. What do you think about the restaurants that sit on those kinds of streets where there are bicycle lanes, where the traffic has calmed? Do you see benefits? Do you see increased economic activity? So what are the tools in the toolkit? Well, you passed a complete streets policy in 2015. I'm going to suggest that's not enough, that now it's about institutionalizing those behaviors in all of your work. And I'll just give a handful of examples. I know you are, in fact, I had the great privilege of speaking with the Greater Peoria Economic Development Corporation. Their monthly meeting was today over in East Peoria. And in fact, your city engineer was there, and she indicated you are in the process of thinking about design guidance around complete streets. I share with you the design guide from Springfield, Massachusetts. Similar-sized city, similar sort of economic downturn in the early 2000s, very diverse racially and socioeconomically, so a nice comparison community. They've created a design guide that's only 24 pages long. I tell you that because it's really easy to get bound up in the idea of a giant tome, a volume, that's going to go sit on a shelf somewhere, and it's not going to actually be part of the daily work of the people that build and maintain your roads. It's, I think, very beneficial to think about a document like this as a comparative document. Might be one for you to look at as you think about this. The pictures on the right there are some of the complete streets activities they've done. The top is just some simple lane striping, they've done bicycle lanes. The middle one is a horrible six-way intersection where they've built, wait for it, a roundabout to the great benefit of the surrounding community. I know those sounds horrifying. There are a lot of people that say roundabouts, utter disaster. We've got really good evidence around how they reduce collisions, how they maintain traffic flows in certain circumstances. Springfield, Massachusetts is doing it as part of their design guide. This is guidance from the Federal Highway Administration that says lane reductions. Councilmember Gray, we were talking before about the lane narrowing, how sometimes those are very controversial. I share the example from Champaign-Urbana, Illinois, here. Four-lane road, it was about to be repaved. They did the analysis and realized its conversion from four lanes to three would actually improve the collisions they were seeing. They were seeing left-turn collisions. People were trying to turn across two lanes of oncoming traffic, often being hit by the second car. Let me say this, when they proposed this, a number of businesses along the corridor raised a ruckus, even created a website and said, this is going to be a disaster. They're going to take a lane away and therefore take away the traffic that comes to our businesses. To their credit, they went ahead and did it because the evidence told them that what they would do is actually reduce those left-turning collisions. And what they found was the businesses along the corridor benefited because they moved just as much traffic. When somebody goes to make a left, they now move into the center-turning lane. The free phone lane therefore maintains traffic flows, and they have many fewer left-turn collisions because they've eliminated what's called a multiple threat there, two oncoming traffic lanes. These things are challenging. They're sometimes counterintuitive, but just because they're scary doesn't mean we shouldn't be doing them if the evidence tells us they are the right answer, and we've got to help people move up the learning curve. And in fact, demonstrations like your Main Street demonstration are one way to get there. Historically, I, as an engineer, when I measured the performance of a road, I would have thought about the level of service. How much delay do cars experience, and how much traffic can I push through? But I'm going to tell you that now we're getting guidance, again, from the Federal Highway Administration. This is a guidebook for bicycle and pedestrian performance measures on roadways. And they're saying you should be thinking about equitable access. How about low-income households? How about households that don't own cars? How about people with disabilities? How do they access that corridor? Not just how do cars move down that corridor. I'm telling you this about the federal guidance, it's very important, because if you're going to apply for federal money, they're expecting you to look through this more sophisticated lens and not just make the case based on the fact that we can push more cars down a road. So this guidance suggests those lane reductions can be done as part of your routine paving program. Don't go out and make a special project out of it. When we're repaving anyway, that's an opportunity to ask a question. For example, the picture on the right, which is, by the way, from Hutchinson, Kansas. Small town, western Kansas, does not have two nickels to rub together, yet they are supporting their complete streets program by doing it through what we call routine accommodation. When they touch a road, they ask the question, could we make an improvement? Indeed, they've adopted a simple maintenance checklist that asks very simple questions like these. When we're repaving, might we be able to stripe a bicycle lane? Could we add a shoulder? If there's a shoulder there, does it need to be repaved as well? Or if there are adjoining sidewalks, could we do the work while we're mobilizing the equipment anyway, thereby lowering the marginal cost, making these projects cost less? These are the kinds of opportunities that I think you're taking advantage of. I'm really excited to see the work we've already done. Very enthusiastic to hear that you're planning to restore Adams and Jefferson to two-way streets from one-way. You know, we put those one-way streets in the 70s often in cities across the country to essentially allow people to escape to the suburbs. And of course, when we complained about why we roll up the sidewalks in downtown on weeknights, the answer is because we gave everybody an easy way to run away, right? And drive on these roads out to the suburbs. Moving them back to two-way streets will restore a kind of a humane level and speed of traffic and help all of the businesses along those corridors. Last part of the story, there's Main Street, that's right where the demonstration that you saw the video of. There's the segment from Adams to Jefferson. I want to share with you, that's an image that I think was even in the video that showed the layout. Essentially, it was going to take the four-lane corridor, turn it to two lanes, add a protected bicycle lane on one side. Protected meaning the bike lane was actually between the parking and the sidewalk. On the other side, it was between the parking lane and the active travel lane, but there were two bike lanes. And the students actually went down on a Thursday a few weeks before and got just about 20 minutes of data on a number of things. They actually, and here are the kids, and there they are looking at it. They collected a handful of data, and then they went back when the demonstration was set up and collected data again. They looked at vehicle speeds, they looked at the numbers of vehicles, pedestrians, bicyclists. These are their data sheets. I showed them these slides today, by the way, and they were over the moon that city council is actually going to see the marks they put on paper when they were out there collecting the data. Here are a couple more. One of the kids actually said, that's mine, that's mine. He wanted with great pride me to tell you that he was very careful when he collected this data, and he was paying close attention as he was counting the cars or the pedestrians on the street. Let me share the data. What they found back when it was a four-lane alignment, about 55 cars were on the northbound lanes and about 40 in the southbound lanes. Again, they only just took a little 20-minute bullet of data. They also found that there was some amount of pedestrian activity on the courthouse side of Main, less so on the other, a handful of people crossing at the intersections. Here's the important point. They then went back and looked, and remember, the art festival was going on the weekend, it was September 24, 25, that they did this. And you see twice as many cars in the same duration of time, about 20 minutes, so more like 100 in the northwestbound direction and 80 in the southeastbound. They saw many more pedestrians, about the same number on the courthouse side, but many more on the other side, many more crossing the street. Interestingly, one of the kids pointed out to me, they saw more people crossing at mid-block. And I said, wait a minute, wait a minute, you're telling me people were crossing in the middle of the road? Why weren't they going to the crosswalks? And I asked them that question today, and this is how smart the kids were. They said, well, they only had two lanes of traffic to cross rather than four, and the traffic had been slowed down. And I said, oh, had it? So we looked at their speed data. And this is a histogram of the speeds of vehicles. They captured data for about 40 vehicles. And you'll notice they're spread from about 20 up to about 30 miles per hour. Now, why does speed matter? The kids reminded me, I had showed them this slide, that if you get hit by a car going 20 miles an hour, you've got about a 95% chance of survival. If that car's going 30, your chance of survival drops to about 50%, and if it's going 40, it drops to very little. So we know speed kills, and they understood that. And the kids said, when we took the data during the festival, right, where the traffic was, you know, the lanes were narrowed and, the blue bars here show you the representation. And what you see is the data all tends to shift a little bit slower. The average speed dropped from about 23 to 20 miles an hour, and particularly notably, the high-speed data disappears. There aren't vehicles going at 28, 29 miles an hour anymore. And the kids said, that made pedestrians feel a lot safer. My friends, these are middle schoolers making extraordinary deductions by virtue of going out and taking the time to observe the evidence, right? We could do a much better job. You could argue with me about the scientific method here, and I would accept that. But I think it does give us a sense of what the opportunity is here. We could do more of these demonstrations and pop-ups. We could do, collect more of the data, understand where we could use low-cost treatments. Not everything has to be a million-dollar project. And I would say that this organization, Tool Design, is one of the leading engineering and design and design firms in the country. They have said, as we go forward and think about streets in the post-pandemic era, maybe we should use the three E's: equity, ethics, and empathy, as we think about how we design our roadways, right? Let's think about all users of all abilities, all backgrounds, people with and without cars, make a world where they can all navigate safely. Nobody's anti-car, nobody's saying, don't build roads for cars, they're saying, let's build roads that provide safe opportunities for all users, because they really benefit our most vulnerable users. And I would remind you that your leadership is really important on this, and in particular, you've got to give cover to the planners, the public works, the engineering staff that may make recommendations based on best practices, but that might be counterintuitive for folks who don't do this work. The people who here, to your point, again, Councilman Grab, that said, you know, narrowing the road, how can that work better? That's a disaster. But they're not expert in this. And you as leaders, quite honestly, have to give the political cover, because you're not the only ones in this game. You're in a competitive market, and the cities that are out there doing it, and I just happen to show images from other places I've worked, Rochester, New York, Rochester, Minnesota, Asheville, North Carolina, I mentioned Springfield, Mass, there are lots of places that are devoted to this as part of their economic development, not just public health, but economic development initiatives. And I suggest Peoria is perfectly positioned to do the same, and I am very enthusiastic, can't tell by my level of energy around this, about the work you've done already and about where the opportunity is to do more and to institutionalize it. I think it's very commendable, you have a great core group working on it, including the team that attended, that Centers for Disease Control Institute, and I think there's great dedication. And I'll conclude with my last little story, if I may, Madam Mayor. These are my children, who are now 23 and 26 years old, but I used to show this picture of them with that article from the New England Journal of Medicine dated back in 2005 that said, it is possible we're raising the first generation of youth in this country that will have statistically shorter life expectancies than their parents. And it was based on the rising rates of essentially chronic diseases associated with sedentary lifestyle, right? Cardiovascular disease, the fact that we now see young children with type 2 diabetes, and we used to think that that was only an adult disease. The really bad news is, in fall of 2019, before the pandemic, they published this article in the Journal of the American Medical Association that says it's happened. So statistically, kids being born today will have a statistically shorter life expectancy than their parents. And we all know that that burden will not fall evenly among all children. Children of wealth, children for higher-income households, in general, white households, we'll see higher life expectancies, and the most burdened households in our community will see it go down, and that will be enough to lower the average. We can do better as a society, I know you know that, I know that's why Peoria started down this path, but I urge you to maintain the course, take advantage of the expertise that's here, and reach out if you need more, because we want to help you do this good work. And again, my sincerest thanks, not only for your time tonight, but most of all, for allowing me to have time with some of your most impressive young people, who I hope are in these seats a couple of decades from now.
Me too.
If we're lucky, they will be.
Yes.
And thank you all so much for the time to visit with you and for your patience with me.
Thank you, Mr. Fenton. There are a number of questions, I'm sure, around the council, but first I want to say I love your energy, your enthusiasm, this is a great presentation. I agree that this is an urgent priority, this is the way, the direction that we should be moving, and I really appreciate the focus on equity. You know, that's the center of this effort, so thank you very much. Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank you, Mr. Fenton, for this presentation. I've been a huge enthusiastic advocate for complete streets since I joined this council in 2013, you know, was a big part of us adopting the Complete Streets Plan. And in fact, I asked the city manager, I think, two months ago when Counselor Velpula joined us, if we could have a sort of a refresher on the complete streets policy, because so many now around the horseshoe, we're not here when we adopted that policy. I believe there's only three of us that were here when we adopted that policy. So it's good to hear your enthusiasm and help us get reinvigorated. It's been a priority for me, I know a number of the department heads were very enthusiastic about it, and it has been incorporated in a number of road projects that we've done, you know, Main and University, Forest Hill, Northmore Road, and the things now that we're doing downtown and in the warehouse district. So I welcome this presentation, and I hope we continue to advocate for it and to stick up for it. It isn't always easy, it is a change for people. I've taken a lot of the hits from people that were not happy about some of the proposals that we did in the beginning, but I think they've been quite successful, and they've really made an impact on the neighborhood I live in and in the city as a whole. So thank you very much, and we'll keep at it.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Fenton, for a wonderful presentation. I am, as a, well, let me see, a person who's pretty active, I can really appreciate everything that the complete streets includes. I just had one question. You know, we talk a lot about lighting, and I know most of these pictures are in the daytime, would you mind talking a little bit about lighting and how critical that is to complete and safe streets and neighborhoods?
That's a great question, and indeed, we, at the Economic Development Council meeting today, we did a walk audit, we did a walk-around. A walk audit is being used increasingly as a community planning tool, so when we're thinking about a project, rather than just having a public meeting in a conference room somewhere, putting up boards and images, we say, let's go walk that environment, experience it, let's invite, by the way, somebody with, that uses a wheelchair, somebody who's visually impaired or blind, let's make sure some kids and some seniors are with us on the walk. So make sure that the group is representative, right, of the population that we'd like to be able to use that environment. And to your point, maybe we don't always do those, we did today at lunchtime because that's when our meeting was, but maybe we do an evening walk audit. Maybe we choose to do some in colder weather in the winter, I've done them in Anchorage, Alaska in winter, because snow clearing is a big problem for them. We've done them intentionally in the evening, we did one in Philadelphia at night through a neighborhood that caused people some concern, and I said, when you mean some concern, what do you mean? And we had to peel away the layers of the onion before people came forward and finally opened up and said, well, I'm a white person, I think this is a mostly black neighborhood, and I feel uncomfortable here. And we got talking about, you know, so we got talking about race and sort of social expectations, as well as very mundane things like lighting, right, and the ability to just, you know, see your way safely across the street. So I commend your question, I think lighting is very important, particularly with that aging population whose vision, we know, is now worsening, right, with age. And the good news on that is, some of my colleagues in the engineering world are doing great things with lower-cost lighting systems, dried LED and all of that, and I'm sure you guys have, you know, are aware of some of the work there. I think there's a real opportunity to be very creative and thoughtful about how we solve that problem, within the financial constraints that I am sure your engineering and public works departments will say, hey, I've still got a real-world budget I've got to live with here. But there is no doubt lighting critically important, and as you think about a downtown district that you're hoping to see revitalization, I was really pleased to see the pedestrian-scale lighting, for example, you know, not the giant overhead Walmart parking lot lights, right, but that pedestrian-scale lighting in the warehouse district, which was clearly an acknowledgement of a desire to make it a pedestrian-friendly setting. At least that was, you know, that's my takeaway. So commendable, it's clear you're thinking about it, and you're right to continue to do so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Mr. Fenton? I also want to recognize Anthony Corso, who's in the Chamber Council, he's been a leader in this effort for a long time, and you look good on the film there, video, Anthony, we appreciate all your work and your efforts in this area.
If I may, Madam Mayor, Anthony and Councilman Ruckregal were really critical members of your team that participated in that CDC training, and I really want to give credit to both of them for, you know, they really engaged the group, they got people to hang in, we had to do it virtually through the Centers for Disease Control, your team showed up, you did, we asked you to do a virtual walk audit, I could, there's a magnificent slideshow of the work that they did here, exploring a lot of the very questions that we're talking about. So it gave me a great hope, and when I got the opportunity, the invitation from Christie to come back, I said, you bet, there's a lot happening there, I'm here in a second.
Absolutely. Councilman Ruckregal, thank you for your leadership in this area, I know you're a part of the committee and have been taking a lead in terms of introducing this to the community and the pop-up event as well, and you've been educating me on complete streets as well, so thank you for your leadership. There we go.
Thank you. And you'll recognize a lot of names around there that I think are very instrumental within the city, even Dr. Leslie McKnight, who with the Health Department is a great, is a great partner in this to be able to really make sure that health equities are brought in. And you know, just one more on, I think, Councilmember Jackson's question, and I think that is one that is extremely critical, is not just doing these walk audits when it's nice outside, but to do them at night, at different times of day, in the mornings, early, late at night, but also in different weathers. What does it look like when it rains? What does it look like when it snows? Because those are the times when pedestrians may be using the walkways in a very different way, and we need to be able to take that fully into account whenever we produce truly transportation corridors that all can use. It even goes so far as to maybe make sure that we don't have all of our signs just in English. Let's look at how our full community can be able to access that and make it a welcoming city across the board. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I'm just looking at, I don't know what page number it is, but you talk about Peoria's complete streets policy that we need, I mean, it was adopted in 2015, but we need to take a step further now.
Yes, ma'am.
We need a plan for implementation, changes to procedures, processes, training and education for staff, limited and defined exemptions, specific design and maintenance, guidance and requirements, and new performance measures. So those are the kind of bullet points that you identified.
Those are really all the best practices that are your natural next steps, that's right, Madam Mayor, I'm glad you called that out. And, you know, you're working your way toward some of those, like that, working on the new design guide, right? You're going in that direction, you're using the pop-ups and the demonstrations to begin to collect data, I think that, but all of that stuff, and there's lots of good information available to you. As a city, when you need more help on this, it's going to be available, that's out there. So I really commend your attention to that. The most important beginning, I mean, I'll leave you with this reminder, this stuff does not necessarily have to be exceptionally expensive. One of the concerns often is, oh my gosh, we're going to add 20, 30% to every road project we do because we're going to have to do now bicycle and pedestrian stuff. And that's not always the case. Certainly there are times when there is a cost associated that's not insubstantial. But often we find the cheapest time to do this work, when we're out doing work anyway, a road is being torn up for a water or a sewer line or something, and we're doing routine repaving, fixing potholes, doing what we call mill and fill, you know, scraping off the top and repaving. Those are the opportunities to, at relatively low cost, possibly do simple things like take 13-foot travel lanes and make them 11 feet to help bring speeds down, and all of a sudden that two feet becomes part of a viable shoulder that's now a bicycle lane. Just an example, but it's a very real one that many communities are using. So, you know, but that bullet point list is not a bad to-do list for you as you go forward, so thanks for pointing it out.
Okay. Very good. And Mr. Manager, can you confirm this is the direction we're moving?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is the direction we're heading, as was mentioned, we adopted the policy in 2015, and we are incorporating these elements in the major road reconstruction work that we're working on. Western Avenue, we're doing that at Glen Avenue as well, and with other future road reconstruction projects as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Privilege, thank you all very, very much.
Okay, Madam, oh, oh. Councilmember Ruckregal?
I'd make a motion to receive and file this presentation.
Yes, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-333 is a communication with request to concur with a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R4 single-family residential district for a short-term rental at 408 North Cooper Street, Peoria, Illinois.
Thank you, Mayor, please.
Excuse me, just a minute, let me, there we go. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Director Doolin, could you approach the lectern, please? I warned him in advance, that way he'd be on ground level. Directors, we go forward with the short-term rentals, what enforcement mechanism do we have in place if we get that call on a weekend that things are out of control, 10 West High Street or wherever?
Yes, sir, thank you, Councilman. Similar to with short-term rentals or long-term rentals or any property in our neighborhood, if there's something of concern at the property that's causing a nuisance to the neighborhood, we'd want you to call the non-emergency police number and let them know what's going on, such as, you know, loud music, too many people, code violations, things like that. The after-hours calls should go to the non-emergency police department phone number, and then they will respond, and then we will follow up to see if it's a violation of their special use after the fact.
Now, very specifically, how do we connect the complaint and then community development acting up, or rather, acting, following up on the complaint?
So we will, after these get more established and we have the list, we'll work out some sort of relationship with the Neighborhood Services Unit. We work very closely with Sergeant Romans and his team right now on a lot of neighborhood issues, so I'm sure it won't be an issue to get status reports on some of these properties to ensure they are complying.
And I would certainly think that the neighbors of some of these properties would be aware of the nature of the properties, and hopefully, none of the short-term rentals that would be approved would be problematic, but we need to have a mechanism in place if something goes awry. And I'm glad that you've thought about that. The police department would be involved in annotating this and making certain that you were aware of it then?
Yes, sir, we will make sure that happens.
And the property in question here is 408 North Cooper Street in a second district, district second to none. Happily, the petitioner stated that she would be quite happy with no more than, what, two guests?
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate the work that staff has done on this particular address and the documentation given to the council as relates to the input from not only city manager and your office, but also the input from our Planning and Zoning Commission, which has reviewed this very carefully, and a number of residents have signed petitions stating they're supportive of this, who are nearby. And of course, as is the case, it's not just going to be in District 2, but in all the districts, you're never going to have uniformity of opinion. So having said that, I would move to approve this as outlined.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Velpula. Any other questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-334 is a communication with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R4 single-family residential district for a short-term rental at 110 East Briarwood Court.
Madam Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I would move for approval.
Is there a second? It's seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just add that this has also received strong support from the neighborhood, and it also is limited, they're only having two guests, so I am fully supportive of this. Thank you. fully supportive of this. Thank you.
Welcome. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. Twenty-one dash two nine nine is a communication with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R four, single-family residential district for a short-term rental at 1314 North Sheridan Road.
Councilmember Grab?
I move for approval as outlined.
Is there a second? Councilmember Euler? Any comments, questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-one dash three one three is a communication from the City Manager and Corporation Council with request to adopt an ordinance amending the special service area agreement between the City of Peoria and Westlake Shopping Center, LLC. And there is currently a motion on the floor to adopt an ordinance amending this special service area agreement between the City of Peoria and Westlake Shop, Shopping Center.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a motion for a one-week deferral on this item, please.
Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Any comments, questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously.
Twenty-one dash three two zero is a communication with request to approve the estimate of taxes to be levied in the amount of $26,857,931 at a rate of 1.3534.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I move to approve an estimated tax levy of $40,000 less than what's in our packet to hold the 2021 rate.
Is there a seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal? Any comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-one dash three one seven is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director with request to receive and file the 2022-2023 by annual budget, and there are report packs on your desk.
We finally made it here. Okay. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have several report packs that we just wanted to, to kind of very quickly run through just for your, for your benefit, that you had asked for at the last meeting. The first pertains to the SAFER grant. This is the, the grant application that we would make in the spring for the fire department. We are eligible under the hiring activity section of this grant. We are not eligible under the recruitment and retention activity. That's only for volunteer fire departments. In that handout on page three, there is the, the cost estimate of what we would be applying for, for 11 firefighters to restore one full engine. We also reference here that, that we've increased the fire department's budget in this recommended budget book by $500,000 to cover the cost of overtime while we await that, that decision on a federal grant. Question number two was pertaining to the federal earmarks. This item here, we just wanted to identify that we had made a request to our legislative delegation in Congress for a number of projects. We had eight projects that we made requests for. I'm pleased to note that as of right now, two road projects, Adams and Jefferson and Pioneer Parkway are, were tagged for approval as part of the Surface Transportation Bill, as well as $1 million for the demolition of Harrison School, and $450,000 for the combined sewer overflow improvements by Senator Durbin. Those are in two separate appropriation bills that Congress is taking up. If they survive, and I have to say that, if they survive, as we continue to see Congress discussing and debating what they're going to do, these dollars would come forward. So that's, one of the aspects that we're looking at is whether or not, we're, we're hearing that the transportation funding may not get, get funded as part of this, but we don't know. And so, our fingers are crossed and hopeful that, that this type of member-directed spending would be still part of any kind of federal appropriations bill as we move forward. Question three was from Councilman Kelly. This is pertaining to fund balances. And really what a, we, to just quickly summarize this, this, this chart shows you that over the, the course of 2022, what our, our beginning and ending fund balances would be. They would in total be $93.2 million at, at the beginning of 2022 and 85.7 at the end of 2022. We really only have one specific financial policy that pertains to a threshold for our reserves, and that's in the general fund, which is at 25% of the operating expenditures in our general fund. And as we mentioned last week, the budget that, that we're recommending would start the year with about 19% of the, the fund balance, unreserved unrestricted fund balance. So, we've made some progress. I think that, that in discussions with the Finance Director, we'd like to, to probably come back with some more concrete policies around, financial policies around some of our other funds. Our capital, our capital funds really should be dollars in and dollars out. And we would, would want that to be reflected in our financial policies. But there may be some other special revenue policies or internal service fund, funds that we have, for example, our healthcare fund, that we want to maintain a certain fund balance in. So we'll come back to you with some recommendations on those as well. Question number four was pertaining to Wisconsin Avenue. This came from Councilman Reganbuck. We do believe that we can restore the Wisconsin Avenue project. We think that we could restore it to a mill and overlay, which would be 8.6 million versus the 12.5. This would still improve the sidewalks. This would still address the, the, the street itself. So we, we feel that we can, based upon our existing funds, fund this over the course of the next couple of years, beginning '22 through 2024, that that could be included. Question number five was pertaining to the general fund balance. We, we went back, Councilman Reganbuck asked us if we could look at balancing the general fund. We went back and looked at our revenues for both 2022 and 2023, as well as some of the expenses, notably in Public Works. We do feel that, that we can make some adjustments here to balance the general fund, and we can, we can bring those forward to you next week in the form of a motion. We also would want to note that, that as we mentioned about the SAFER grant, that we increased that funding by $500,000. And if we are successful in getting that grant, that additional cost of the, of the, the overtime for 2022 would not be there in 2023. And then that revenue and all of that cost would then fall to the bottom line. So that's something we wanted to point out as well. As we move on to question number six, this was a question on the garbage fund. Councilman Reganbuck had asked what the status was of our, our garbage fund. Currently, it's sitting at, with a deficit fund balance of $6.6 million. We do believe, that was as of the end of 2019. We have been making progress at, at paying that back. In fact, we anticipate that at the end of, of 2022, we should be closer to, to $4.9 million in deficit. So we're slowly starting to put away more and more resources towards balancing that fund. And the one thing I would point out, and, and I think that the members of the landfill committee understand this, is the moment that we close landfill number two, the city-county landfill number two, our costs for disposal at the landfill will drop by 30%, and if not more. So as, as time goes on, that spread is getting larger. So, it's in all of our interest, obviously, to see that, that landfill two is filled up and is closed so that we can move on to the third landfill, because that will accrue not only the ability to pay off this deficit that we see here, but it should be able to afford us to, to look at, at freezing or lowering the, the residential garbage fee as well, because that cost won't be continuing to rise as it has been with Waste Management operating landfill number two. Question number seven was an update on if, if we were to extend Depot Street. This is the, the total cost estimate. We have total costs here for this project of just a little over $5 million. That includes land acquisition, construction, as well as some of the engineering work. If council wants to add that back in the form of a motion next week, if we come back with that, we can do that as well and put that together so that we can include this project. It would be not only the expense of the project, we've been looking at a private placement, working with one of our local banks to finance this, which would then be paid out of the Warehouse District proceeds. We do have sufficient funds in the Warehouse District to cover this cost. This addresses the, the, the need for parking in the Warehouse District, and that's something we'd like to, to certainly continue to, to see the, the great strides we're making in the Warehouse District continue. Question number eight pertains to the, the pension fee. This is just giving you the, what the fee would be if it was to be extended into 2023, what that cost would be, as well as what the, the estimate that staff would recommend if we were to go forward with this. This is just background information. I know this, this is something certainly that council will want to discuss. Question number nine is the timing of the state grants. And this, question number nine on page 14 shows the list of, of grants that, that our, our local state legislative delegation has worked very hard to secure for, for the City of Peoria on our behalf. We do not know yet when they'll be released. It's really kind of a function of the governor's office timing that. Our legislators have indicated that they're working to try and identify the times when those projects will be released. And as soon as we get more information, obviously, we'll let you, you know. There's some sizable dollar amounts here. Main Street at $25 million, The Riverfront at $15 million, MacArthur Highway at $10 million, Pioneer Parkway at $3 million. And then the, you know, there's, there's other projects, some smaller ones for Springdale Cemetery as well, that are, that are on the list. So, so, you know, there's funds that are there. It's just a matter of the timing that, of when the state will be able to release those bond funds. And I did have a chance to speak to a member of the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, who did indicate that it really is kind of driven more from the governor's office right now with that. Question number 10 was the list of, at Councilman Allen's request, he had asked for, what's the list of drainage projects in the Stormwater Utility Fund? And this is a breakdown of, of all of those projects with a little more detail for you. Question number 11 was not brought up at last week's meeting, but it was brought up by Councilman Kelly prior to the meeting in a conversation that he and I had about, about some of the roadway infrastructure work that was being done, as well as the, the planned pavement preservation work. And so we wanted to share that information with you. As you can see here, there's a breakout of all of those residential streets that we'll be working with and trying to touch in each one of the districts. We plan on trying to equalize this, this type of spending across the districts, since this is kind of the residential maintenance work that we work on throughout the entire city. Question number 12 pertains to the fiscal recovery funds. And, and this was some additional spending detail and some additional detail on how we anticipate utilizing the fiscal recovery funds. And so this, this report back really identifies in narrative form what staff looks towards with the recommendations that we've presented to you as part of this budget on how to utilize these funds. I want to point out a couple of things with regards to the fiscal recovery funds, pretty briefly here. What we'd like to do is for those projects that we know that we're soliciting, whether it's business support programs, or whether it's soliciting neighborhood programs that we're putting together, or the work that we're doing with the Health Department and with the, the violence prevention work, what we would be looking at doing would be crafting requests for proposals, crafting a program, building a program, issuing a request for proposals, having the, the staff, whether it's in the Community Development Department for neighborhood work, the Economic Development Department if it's business support, or in the Police Department if we're talking about violence intervention, that we would have that staff provide that level of fiscal oversight over the dollars that would be going out the door, as well as coordinating those types of solicitations. We would still bring all of that back to you as the council for approval. So what that would mean is if we're structuring a program, for example, that talks about a first-time homebuyers program, we would structure that program and bring it back to you for your blessing and your approval here at the City Council. Same thing if we're looking at violence prevention or violence intervention programs. As we craft that solicitation, we would send that out, garner those, those solicitations back, and then come to you with the proposals that we would recommend at funding. Very similar to what we've done with the Community Development Block Grant Program over the, the commission, the, the Human Services Commission. As they allocate resources, it's very, it would be a process very similar to that. We would come back to you and ask for your support and approval of whatever recommendations we would have on that program. So, question 13, as it pertains to the, to the, came from Councilwoman Jackson, and it pertained to the South Village Tiff Funds. Really, I think with the, with the dedication of funds towards the MacArthur Highway project, we've really kind of exhausted our ability to utilize the South Village Tiff as a, as a resource for demolition work. We have done that in the past, but it would be difficult to, to proceed right now with this. And we would still recommend that we use those fiscal recovery funds for the time being to support that demolition work. It's still going to be focused inside our qualified census tracts, which would be from basically McClure South in the city. So I think that, that the, the targeted area would still be the area that we're trying to, to make those changes and improvements with. And then lastly, I think council had directed us, oh, question 14 came from Councilman Velpula, who wanted to know what type of workforce development support did we have within the recommendations for fiscal recovery funds? And, and really what we tried to do, based upon our, our, our policy session that we held back in September, is we took the, the economic development funds and we kind of aggregated everything into three larger buckets. The first being business support, the second being business innovation work, and then the third being workforce development support, where we could look at how we could help to grow our workforce of not only our, our small business employers in the region, but others that are really experiencing unemployment that want to get back to work. So, so those are the three areas of focus that we looked at with, with regards to the fiscal recovery funds. And I think we were being mindful, I think, of, of where Councilman Velpula was asking us to think about workforce development in that regard. So, question 15 is just a breakdown of every single capital budget request from 2020 through 2022. This is a list to, to show the capital projects. Councilwoman Jensen had made this request. So this just shows you the projects and what was the changes of those projects over time. We added a narrative on the far-right column that just says if the project has been completed, if the project is still underway, or if there are other issues with regards to this capital project that we just wanted you to be aware of. And then lastly, council had directed us to expand the fiscal recovery funds by $3,58,403. This would, this would increase the funding and spending to what we have received to date from the federal government. So in this regard, the recommendations from staff would be that we would do a couple of things. First is that we would, we would recommend that we fund the demolition of not only Harrison School, but McKinley School. Both would be set aside, we would set aside $2 million for the demolition of both of those schools in the south side. They're inside our qualified census tracts. If we receive the federal earmark that's currently in one of the spending bills, we would come back to you and say, "Council, you have another million dollars in which to allocate of the fiscal recovery funds." But at least now, we know that we would be able to be directed at trying to demolish those two large structures that have been a blighting influence on the south side, and that's something we'd want to focus on. Second, we would recommend putting $1 million in, or $1,58,403 towards the Allen Road Reconstruction Project that's on Allen up to north, from War Memorial Drive up to Northmore. This project, we set aside $2 million in 2022 and $2 million in 2023 that's in the capital budget. But we would recommend that we would fund that portion, because that frees up a million dollars that we could put towards the Wisconsin Avenue project. And, and that would allow us to dedicate locomotive fuel tax dollars to go towards the reconstruction of, of Wisconsin Avenue. And then in year two, we would recommend putting $2 million, particularly the section from Republic to McClure on Wisconsin, dedicating those dollars towards that. It's inside the qualified census tract. It would be eligible for that fiscal recovery fund spending. And that's how we would recommend, in essence, not only spending $3 million of the fiscal recovery funds, but an additional $2 million in 2023. So the, the recommendation actually comes forward with, and I think that was, Councilman Grab had suggested, how can we accelerate that? had suggested, how can we accelerate that funding? What would be that plan for that? This would leave the council with about $11.3 million to determine how to allocate over fiscal years 2024 and 2025. So it would just, we would start to be tapering down that spending over that period of time, but this allows us to try and accelerate that in order for us to address some of the major road reconstruction projects we have, some of the other infrastructure needs that we have, and as well as addressing some, I think, some significant issues that we have in the south side with McKinley and Harrison School. And I know I ran through that very quickly, so I would be happy to answer any questions. And Director Crati is here, as well as there's certainly other staff that's either here in chambers or next door in the council room in room 404.
Sure. These were excellent questions put forth by council, and we appreciate the extra effort in responding to each and every one in this thick package. First question I have is, in the fortunate event that we do get earmark funding for perhaps Harrison School, and then it comes back to council that, is that, does that require a supermajority budget revision?
No. No, in terms of, if we were to receive the earmark?
Yes.
No, it would, normally what we've done with grants is we have booked in the grants. Well, a budget amendment would, to spend money would require a grant, but since we're recommending that spending here, I don't believe that it would require that supermajority vote. We would just be supplanting one federal source with another in order to be able to go forward with that at a later date. I think what it would do, it would free up that $1 million of fiscal recovery funds for council to have a discussion about how to allocate those.
How to spend it. Okay, okay, great. All right. Councilmember Grab.
I think these 16 reports help us form more mature opinions about where we need to go with the budget. How we spend the money is probably the clearest indication of what our values are as a council, and hopefully they mirror the values of our constituents and that of the Peoria community that we represent. Is Chief Bachmann anywhere near here to approach the lectern?
Chief, can you come to the microphone?
I'm at the microphone. Would you like me in the chambers?
Is it okay if he speaks from where he is?
Sure. Sure. Chief Bachmann, I was, and I remain, and I know many members of the council remain very, very concerned about the report you gave, which I questioned you about, as relates to what's happened in our city to response times and structure fires being contained to the room of origin. And in an essay which you provided for the council, you had some chilling figures as to what's happened since 2017, to our ability to control fires to the room of origin. Can you highlight some of the points made in that report once again for the council?
Yes, Councilman, thank you. In 2017, we had, let me start here. The National Fire Protection Association, basically, their last survey was in 2017 that I could find, that showed that the national average for containing fires to the room of origin was at right at 75%. For us, in 2017, before we lost Rescue One, Rescue Two, and Engine Two, we were keeping fires to the room of origin 71% of the time. And as you know, beginning January 1 of 2019, we lost Rescue One and Rescue Two. And our data from 2019 shows that we went down to 65% of the time, I believe, is what is in the report for 2019. During 2020, when we lost Engine Two due to COVID, our data shows that from the beginning, January 1 of 2021, and I believe the report ended in either the end of August or into September, but to that point, eight months into the year, we were keeping fires to the room of origin 54.5% of the time. And as you stated, deeply concerning to all of us.
It should be concerning to the policymakers in this room because we have just seen, because of all these reductions in firefighter positions, a very large increase in the possibility of civilian casualties and casualties to the men and women of our Peoria Fire Department. Am I exaggerating that?
No, no. And I think what's been mentioned before is, you know, we say, you know, we lost Engine Two, but what's been said on the council floor before, I believe, is that this doesn't just affect this district, this affects the entire city to some degree. It affects our ability to train because we have less staff on hand during the day to, you know, handle those call loads. I think Rescue One, Rescue Two, and Engine Two combined, the last time they were all in service together, ran 6,500 runs in 2017, I believe. So those calls don't go away. They just went to other machines and surrounding territories, you know, and really putting a hamper on our resiliency, our ability to bounce back when we do get a little bit busier than, you know, some days are a little busier than others.
So we have lost about 20% of all of our fire apparatuses because of these cuts since 2017. Chief, I appreciate that report. I think it's time for the council to act. I appreciate the fact that we have the ability to take advantage of the SAFER grant, but tonight I would move that the city council direct the city manager to restore an engine cut by council action in 2020, subject to the limitations of the annual appropriation ordinance, and that the manager and fire chief pursue the 21 SAFER grant once the window for application opens. The restoration of this engine, which needs to be done as soon as possible, would be effective November 1, 2021, and remain in effect until council takes further action. It's a motion Mayor Lee I want to make.
I second it by Councilwoman Jensen. Member Regenbach?
I was going to follow up with another report back, so nothing right now.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Two questions for Corporation Council. Are we able to vote on an item in this year's budget without it being properly noticed on the agenda, since the budget item is related to next year's agenda? And would this also require a supermajority?
You could certainly take action on individual items in the budget, as was just suggested, as you have in previous budget sessions. I'm not sure I understand the question about acting on it now for next year's budget. If you could help me understand a little better.
The question was to restore these services effective November 1, which would have a financial impact on this year's budget, which is not what is open for discussion.
Correct. If that is already budgeted in the fire department's budget for this year, it may not take council action or a budget amendment for November, December of 2021.
So we, I guess, need to know from the manager if this is restoring the services in this year's budget?
Well, if council votes in the affirmative to restore the position, based upon what I just heard from Councilman Grab's motion, it would be subject to the appropriation limitation, so the authority, of spending authority within that budget. That's how a department spends their funds. If they have those funds available, they would be able to do that. So I would work with the fire chief to look at that. I think that, you know, in my look at their spending, I think they have sufficient spending authority in the budget right now to accommodate that, just based upon what they have or haven't spent towards the end of the year. So I think it's possible that it could be done with their existing budget as it sits today.
Well, I certainly am not prepared to vote on could be done. We need definitive information, so I don't think we're prepared to have this discussion
Councilmember Kelly?
At the risk of being labeled heartless and cruel and not caring about public safety, I think there are many, many, many very important priorities in what we're discussing here. And I think in our discussion, in our COVID discussion, we did this. We pulled out Public Works all by itself and slaughtered it all by itself, and nobody else had to share the cost. I don't like this. These things have to be done together. I know that Councilman Grab is, really wants to restore this. He talks about it all the time, and for a long time. But I think it is inappropriate right now to do this. We have an entire budget to be concerned with. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a point of clarification, would this engine be staffed with overtime?
It would have to be staffed with overtime. We don't have the staff to fill it any other way.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Ruckregel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City manager, what is the surplus in the revenue that the fire department has to work with right now at this point?
Councilman, could you say that again? I'm sorry.
What is the surplus? You said that there's a surplus there, so it looks like that there may be, and I think you said maybe.
It's not a surplus. We have budgeted for spending in the fire department's budget a little over $19 million for this year. And based upon what they've spent to date, they've spent to date about $15.5 million. So at that rate of spending through the end of the year, they should be able to accommodate this and not exceed their budget authority.
But we've got two months that are fairly critical, I think, that are going to be coming into play, November, December, correct? Where spending could outpace that gap, is that correct?
It's possible, but in terms of looking at the current trend, I think that they could live within their spending authority.
I find it interesting that this was put on the floor tonight to start November 1, because that is, in essence, making a decision for the budget for next year out of the procedure and policy that we've actually, or the process, not the policy, the process that we've actually agreed to. It's interesting. I think calculated. And to not have an advance notice, to not have an agenda item on it, to just put it out there, it's, again, I'll just leave it as interesting. The other part that is not taken into play here in talking with other departments as well is, you know, when we use overtime, and overtime seems to be, and there are some advantages to using overtime because we may not have the pension costs that come with it, correct? And not all overtime is bad overtime. I think in business, in the public side, it's not because we want to make sure that we have the service. But when we rely strictly on overtime to be able to manage machines as well, we also tax the ability of our firefighters to do the best they can, because everybody needs time off as well. Because if you're not fresh, if you are not refreshed, if you don't have that break, you may be able to do that a week, two weeks, three weeks, but you can't do that maybe forever. And so I think, again, we're trying to set a process here that is different from what we have talked about in the budget. And I thought it was going pretty well. I mean, we had some good discussions on the process and on the budget. But I think that this action, which evidently was talked about by some members of council together, but not all, it wasn't convened, and it's kind of interesting that some members were fully aware of this issue item coming forward, looks very, very calculated. And so for that reason, I can't put the citizens of Peoria without knowing what the full effect would this be. We have a budget in front of us. We have a budget discussion coming up for the next two years. We also have, and this will be one of my follow-up questions later on when we actually get back to the budget, which is what we're supposed to be talking about, of what happens over the next five years to our city when the revenue line is below the expense line? And how you plan on handling that? Because you brought us a budget that you say is balanced. Balance doesn't get us, as a Band-Aid from point A to point B for two years, balanced is balanced in the future. And for far too long, we keep looking at two years, and two years, and two years, and that's what's gotten us into this trouble over and over and over again. We're able to finally say that we can actually build up the unencumbered reserves that we need, and we're proud of that, but only because we're going to be spending them in the next couple of years, and we're going to be coming, probably, and I put that in quotes because you never know what the actions are going to be till we get there, for a tax increase for the property owners. Let's talk about the full picture. But evidently, right now, we are doing something that is not even in the budget to be able to talk about.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, this motion has to do with positions that were cut due to COVID. And part of the budget discussion, because we kind of intertwined everything, is what we should do with the recovery money and what we should do now that we are in better financial ground, since we made those cuts a year, more than a year ago, to the fire department. We've restored a number of the public works projects that got postponed or delayed due to what we were facing a year and a half ago because of COVID. So what Councilman Grab is proposing and what I am supporting is just to put that apparatus back that was cut because we were short on funds due to the pandemic and not knowing what was going to happen. It's crucial, due to the report that we got from the fire chief that Councilman Grab brought up, the fire department has been cut and cut and cut, and then this last time when we cut them because of COVID, people around this horseshoe who voted for it said, well, when we get money, maybe we can look at restoring them. Well, we do have money, we're on good financial ground, and we need to do this. One question that I have for Mr. York, related to Councilman Ruckregels, is it's my understanding that the fire department has had money unspent over the past several years, not just this year. Is that true?
Any unspent dollars in any prior fiscal years just falls into fund balance, and that goes for any department and any section of the budget. So it's really just looking at this year is what we would be looking at. It's looking at the spending authority within this calendar fiscal year that we would be looking.
But I guess my point, and maybe the chief knows, it's my understanding the fire department has had unspent money in our last several years in several budgets, and you think that's accurate?
Without having, you know, that information to be able to look at, I wouldn't argue with you over that. Like I said, I think many departments do have unspent dollars that at the end of the year, they don't spend every dollar that they have, and that ends up, you know, either, based on the amount of revenues we collected, it will either fall to the bottom based on the amount of revenues we collected, it will either fall to the bottom line as fund balance, or it's just unspent, and that's, you know, unspent dollars. You had the authority to spend it, but you didn't.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to say, when the manager presented the budget last week with the idea of using overtime to bring an engine back while we applied for the SAFER grant, I was intrigued by that and not fully embracing it, but intrigued by that. And I was one of those council members who voted for the cuts last year, because if you don't have the money, you can't spend it. But to all of a sudden change the discussion from, "We're going to look at this to start in January and discuss the budget as a whole, we pick and choose what we want," I just, I'm very uncomfortable with making the decision on October 26 that's going to take effect on November 1 and cost us at least $1.5 million. I would still be open to discussing this and looking at the proposal the manager put forward, but there's just no way I can support that tonight with such sketchy information. As a financial advisor, I would never use the description, "We're on good financial ground," Councilwoman Jensen. If we're going to be going into deficit spending again in two, three years, that's far from a secure footing to build on. And I just think we have an opportunity now to make a significant impact on this city. We have an opportunity now to restore cuts and to responsibly chart the future. And I just don't think I can say I'm not prepared to start those decisions and start spending that money tonight. I think we learned a lesson from our township officials this evening as to, "Okay, let's cut the levy now, we'll raise it now." You know, that's the kind, and that's on us. I mean, let's face it, we're the township board, but that's the kind of decisions that end up coming back to leaving our constituents scratching their heads. Let's show them we know how to diligently go through this, prudently restore the cuts, and spend the money, and set the groundwork for the future. I would love to be able to support this, but having been made aware of this just this evening, I can't support it tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I firmly believe that we've got a legal procedural issue here, so I'm going to go back to my earlier questions. I've heard that this is both a financial and a non-financial decision. If this is a non-financial decision, because the money is there, then it should not be discussed under this agenda item. Therefore, there is no agenda item to discuss a November 1 reinstatement decision. If this is a financial decision, then we are discussing something that is in this year's budget and should require a supermajority vote, which should be properly noticed, which has not been done. And I firmly believe that there is an issue here that needs outside legal counsel if we are not clear on how this is being approached.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would stand by what I said, as far as if the city manager is discussing with you a personnel proposal that is already budgeted and already within his both statutory and code authority to implement, I'm not even sure it would need the vote of the city council in order to implement. I will say that if it's already budgeted, the city manager's authority, both within the city code and within the statute, is very clear that he sets the number of personnel to work in each department. He determines the overall headcount of the city. If the concept was to simply make sure the process was transparent, again, it may still not need a vote, because it would be within his authority to do so.
Well, that seems very murky and muddy to how we handle other issues here, and we, as a council, took a vote on these decisions. And so if we decide to proceed tonight, I will evaluate legal counsel on this vote starting tomorrow. Thank you.
Councilmember Ruckregal?
Thank you. Just a question for our chief, please. The room of origin is kind of an interesting metric, isn't it? Because that metric, by the way, I think has a lot of variables in it, and even the national reviewers look at that with a lot of metrics, such as open windows, open doors, type of materials that are inside, whether it is part of a structure that is lived in, such as part of the structure if it's a department building, so a commercial, whether it is a vacant property that might be arson. That one particular metric becomes really one of those that, if I'm not correct, at least what I'm told by other fire departments, is that while there is a national average, there is not a national recommendation. Is that correct?
You know, I'm not sure what the recommendation, National Fire Protection Association recommendation is. What I stated was that their survey or results found that 75% of the time, that's like the national standard of what was reported in 2017. And comparing our 2017 data, we were at 71% of the time, and now we are at 54.5% of the time.
So let me ask you, is that a formal data? Is that one where you can right now bring to me? If we're quoting a number there, in a formalized data, which is really what it should be, about room of origin, address, what was in the room, how long it took, how long it took to assemble the lines? I mean, there's a lot more in there, and we're also missing some of the other metrics that I think are on national standards, which probably are the ones we ought to be talking about, and they may show the same thing. We don't know. But we're not seeing a QA or QI on this data here. So I find that one bullet point pulled out among, when we talk about all of the metrics that we normally get to see, is really interesting. It would be like taking this full budget right here and pulling out one number. If we do, I'll tell you the number that I would look at and the taxpayers are looking at, because I've been getting call after call after call about it, is the one that in two years, we are deficit spending. That's the one, if we're going to pull one, but we don't do that. We look at a whole budget, because we have to provide services. But to have one data point pulled out that is not formally put together and try to use that to ramrod something through by part of the council, which has been evidently talking about this without the other part of the council, and then trying to find a legal loophole to be able to get this passed for November 1 is wrong.
Gosh, I just think that I'm as transparent as always. We're discussing budget. I know there's an attempt to do a filibuster, but it won't work, because the people in the city, the people in my district, want us to fund, first and foremost, core basic services, public safety. I agree, we should call a question.
Councilmember Jensen?
I move to call the question.
Madam Clerk, can you read the motion?
I believe Councilmember Grab might have a more thorough motion. Please, Councilmember Grab, if you could repeat your motion.
Yes. The council direct the city manager to restore an engine cut by council action in 2020, subject to the limitations of the annual appropriation ordinance, and that the city manager and Fire Chief also pursue the 2021 SAFER grant once the window for application opens. The restoration that we will be voting on would be effective November 1, 2021, and remain in effect until council takes further action.
It was moved by Councilman Grab and seconded by Councilwoman Jensen. Please cash your ballots. That says Fornaze, Kelly, Euler, Riegenbach, and Ruckregal. Discussing budget, Councilmember Riegenbach, did you have an item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, I appreciate the response to my question regarding Wisconsin Avenue and how it got cut. It was in the 2021 budget and then was just magically removed from this year's budget. So thank you for the work you did. I just want to remind my colleagues, though, and I learned this lesson from Councilman Grab, we don't always disagree, that you got to be consistent and persistent. And the work done on Sheridan Road is an example of his persistence in getting in front of the Public Works Director and the team and keeping that in front of everybody. I think we all, Sheridan Road is an amazing example of what we can do when we put our mind to it. In 2014, the city adopted the Wisconsin Avenue Business Corridor Plan, which included improvements for Wisconsin Avenue. So I appreciate looking at options here, Mr. Manager, to get the work done. If I could just ask a couple follow-ups to this, it would be, what is the PCI measurement on that stretch of Wisconsin? A mill and overlay could potentially be appropriate, but in the past, we'd been led to believe that a reconstruction was necessary. So if we could look at those numbers, I would like to see that. And also, if we do the reduction, how would that affect our implementation of the complete streets? I think tonight of all nights, we're all intrigued by that concept and want to do what we can to fully embrace it. And then, just as an aside, and I mentioned this to Director Powers, that that small one-mile section of Wisconsin has multiple cross-sections, and I love using words like that. Thank you, Nick Stouffer, for coaching me on that. But Wisconsin starts as, it's kind of like a four-lane road at part of it, and then it narrows and widens. It just, having a consistent cross-section is a critical component of what we've been talking about since 2014. So the PCI, the cross-section itself, and how this plays into the complete street narrative would be my follow-ups. Appreciate the work you've done here, but I would like just a little more background. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We're still discussing budget. Are there any other, any other report backs needed? Any questions about the report backs that have already come forth? Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment about, you know, we've been talking about Harrison and McKinley for years. Mr. Manager, I guess my question would be, do we know what it would take for a full demolition in terms of, you know, prepping and everything that would have to go into it? And if we don't, could we do some research, just to give us some sort of foundation as to what we need to do to get to that point?
If I could ask Director Doolin to come to the microphone, and I think he can give you an answer this evening to just kind of explain. We do have some estimates on what the demolition costs would be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. I don't think we have a concrete estimate exactly what it would cost until we get in there and see what sort of environmental concerns may exist. We have done some Phase 1 assessments to assess what we think would take, and we've had a couple demo contractors look at it, just to give us a framework to start with. For Harrison, they've estimated anywhere between kind of $1 million to $1.4 million, and then McKinley, anywhere from kind of $750,000 to $2 million. When we put in the earmarks for the congressional spending request, that's when we kind of took a look to see what we thought the spending approximately might be. But with any demo project that size, until we start actually going through the demo and getting the bids and having people go in and look into it, and with the competitive bid process, we don't know for sure. But those are kind of the estimates that we've talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Doolin. Okay, well, I'll just look forward to maybe a follow-up at some point, because I know, as you said, there are so many unknowns at this point. But I just want to commend the staff for considering this. This has been, it's like, how can I, it's bigger than an elephant in the room we've got. But until we're able to finally begin the process of trying to put a timetable on it, I think the community can really begin to think about those foundational steps we have to make to move forward once we hopefully get to this process. And I think it'll mean a huge, it'll make a huge difference in our community, and I just want to thank you for including that. And I'm willing to do whatever I can to move this process forward, not just for McKinley, but in other districts throughout the city that we need to do to help improve our infrastructure in our neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Member Ruckregal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of, I guess, report backs, if you want to do it that way, City Manager. One, I know as you and I talked, one of the good things is, right now, I think both police and fire, from the pension side, the investments, the market moving up has helped, I think, on the pension payments that might be coming up here in the short term. But can you do us a favor? And one of the things that I think was originally stated, and I was a person who was against the pension safety fee, because I didn't think that we would actually move the needle. I might be wrong on that. But I didn't think that in three years, we would move the needle and be anywhere different at the end of that. And I'd hoped that, at least during that timeframe, that council, together with fire, together with, please, would have gone down to Springfield to be able to advocate with our multiple other cities that are facing the same thing together. But Springfield sometimes does what Springfield does, which is they put us on opposite sides of the room, so we don't like each other. And so it seems like we're not working together. But could we get a report back on where we were as far as our pension liabilities on the day of that safety pension fee going into place? Where we are now, because I think it's scheduled to sunset at the end of this year? And what those pension liabilities look like? Also, too, with that, I think most people don't realize that when the pension board was, for fire, was kind of collapsed together, there was also some of the work that I think had been done in Springfield undone with some collapsing of tiers, if that's a good way to say it, that actually costs the taxpayers quite a bit of money. And can you include that in the report back as well, as what the status is of that? And then what, and clearly, so we pull it out, what the pension liability is going to be over the next three years? One of the things that you're recommending in this is to have that safety pension fee be able to be renewed, and that might be the will of council. What I'd like for you to do is I'd like for you to pull 20 houses from the first district, 20 from the second, 20 from each of the districts, of all different price points, and take what that pension fee, businesses as well in that 20, and divide what that pension fee, divide it and divide what that pension fee, divide it by what they pay, not of the property taxes, but to the city. And what percentage increase that is that we are looking at passing on? Because, let's face it, fine fee, collection, utility bill, whatever it is, however we want to call it, it really is a tax. Because these things could be paid on the tax bill. At least, some people would get that write-off, especially some of our people who, that might really make a bigger difference for it. But if we could have what really that percentage is going for and what that looks like? Because I think for some people, it's actually a pretty large tax increase that has already been passed on to them. And then, if we could also have a little bit better understanding of what you're proposing to be able to really balance the budget starting next year and for the next seven years out? It's amazing that we've got $47 million that we have been handed by, as some call it, a windfall. And we're looking at tax increases. We can't even spend one time on talking to budget without spending our reserves down already or talking about a tax increase. Either we have lost our way, or we're not understanding. And you can say that the people of Peoria will pay whatever they can, whatever they're asked to. That's not what I'm hearing. That's not what I hear from the realtors. That's not what I'm hearing from people who are moving to other places. And they're not all moving out of Illinois. It's just too expensive to be able to live in Peoria. So, I'd like to have those report backs if I could.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for the detail outlined from my question regarding the drainage projects. Given the amount of rain we got this past weekend, storm water utility is very relevant. If you can just report back, I see on the budget on page 117, storm sewer lining in Roland Acres, which I know Roland Acres has been a problem when it comes to flooding. If you could just talk about what specific area that this project will be taking place within, whether that's the street, just so that way, when I meet with these constituents, I can provide them a little additional context. But I do appreciate this detail. This is very great, and again, very timely, considering the amount of rain we got this past weekend.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a couple of questions about some of the information in the report back. With regards to the report on the pavement preservation projects, do you, can you, I don't think you did, and it's probably somewhere in our budget, what's proposed in the 2022 budget for pavement preservation? And for 2023?
So, the, if we turn to the capital budget in your binder, the pavement preservation is $860,000 in 2022, and then $900,000, make sure I'm reading that right, my glasses are fogging up. $960,000 thereafter is the pavement preservation budget. The roadway infrastructure budgets is $1.4 million in 2022, and then $1.6 million in 2023, '24, '25, and '26.
Okay, and, well, I think that it's a little bit down, isn't, I'm looking at that other report you did for me on the capital projects. Isn't $860,000 less than what we had planned to spend in 2020 on the program? I'm trying to find it on here. I saw it earlier. So, I just, I think that it's just, it's a high priority, I think, for a lot of us on the council, so.
So, in the adopted 2020 budget, we had $1.2 million for roadway infrastructure projects. So, that number has increased. And pavement preservation was $860,000 in 2020. So, it's roughly about the same or just a little bit higher.
Okay, and then, is that going to include, you noted that the last update we did was in 2017? We usually do it every three years, but I don't think we did.
So, that would be a different line item, which would fund the kind of, the PCI ranking of all the streets. We would continue to do that. We want to try and make sure that we're doing that on a regular interval.
So, we'll start back up doing the three-year cycle.
Yes, yes.
And we're going to do that in 2022?
Maybe if, let me look here and see if I could find it, or maybe if Director Powers, if you know offhand when we'll be doing the next PCI rankings of the city and evaluating the streets, the condition of our streets?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I believe it's 2023. We just completed one.
So, 2023 would be the next year that we would do the scanning of the streets?
Correct, that would be the next.
So, then, we're actually, we actually, since we did it in 2017, so we're waiting six years, so we missed.
No, we did, we just completed one, Counselor.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
We just completed one. We just got the ratings.
Okay, I didn't understand that. Okay, that's great. Because I do, that's a priority for me, and I think it is for most of the people. I see them shaking their heads around the council. So, I just wanted to make sure that was included. Another question I have, and it can be a report back. If the council does not approve the reinstatement or not sunsetting the pension fee, can you give us what that dollar, what that revenue would be? And you may know it off the top of your head.
I think it's roughly about $2 million is what we'd be looking at.
And then?
Per year.
Per year, annually.
$2 million per year.
And then, I know I asked you a week or two ago, we've had some discussions about, you're working on a report to me on all the projects that we've done that are sustainable, green projects. Some of them are CSO, some of them are other things. It might be helpful, I think, if we could, if you can get that report done in conjunction with these budget discussions, and it would be helpful, if it's possible. I'm assuming most of these, at least the road projects, comply with the complete street policy as well as the CSO and our directives to be sustainable. And if you could identify that, I think that would be helpful, too, for the public to see what we're doing to make the city sustainable. I think I have some, I'll probably, I have some other questions, but I'll ask them later. Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting on November the 2nd, which is next Tuesday, is almost entirely devoted to continuation of our biennial budget. There will be additional report backs. I think we do have a couple other items, but we don't want to crowd that agenda next week. I think the SSA item is coming back, but.
That's correct, Mayor. We will have a snow presentation that evening from Public Works. Unfortunately, we're getting to that time of year.
Oh, the snow, snow report.
Yes.
Okay, I guess. So, prepare to have additional budget motions at that time as well. Councilmember Kelly?
Madam Mayor, if someone has not already done it, my memory fails, I would like to move to receive and file.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Ruck Regal. Councilmember Jensen?
Could I just have one more question before we receive and file, if that's okay?
Sure.
With regards to the proposal that you have for using the extra money for the Allen Road project, if we get infrastructure money, which I know, you know, we're waiting on Congress, but I'm pretty confident some of that will be passed and we'll get some. If we get some of that money, then, will you do the same thing that you talked about you would do if we got this money that you've applied for, for the demolitions? And then use it for something else? Or I'm, you know, I'm trying to figure out how that would work?
So, if there's additional infrastructure dollars, certainly, it would afford us the opportunity to look at how we can, we can use that where we may have identified it within the American Rescue Plan funds. It is fungible. So, if there's, if there's money that's unrestricted that would be coming down to the city that we could look at, that's certainly a policy question of how to use those dollars appropriately. That's something we can come back to you with and have that discussion, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and filed to receive and file. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with one nay. Euler? Madam Clerk?
We are at additional unfinished business, if there's any additional unfinished business.
Any additional unfinished business? Councilmember Euler?
I'll wait till new business.
Sorry.
I'll wait till new business.
Okay, all right, very good. Madam Clerk?
We are at new business.
I'd like to start new business by asking Chief Etcheverria to come to the microphone and if you would provide us information on police coverage for October 31st, Halloween.
Well, yeah, for Halloween, we're going to be scheduling extra patrols and having extra officers out and about in the neighborhoods. To include myself and the Assistant Chief, we'll be out giving out candies in the neighborhood somewhere. So, hopefully, we find some kids. And we did change the Halloween trick-or-treating hours this year. My understanding is, it was normally from 5:00 to 8:00. In years past, we changed it from 5:00 to 7:00. We want to make sure that we get kids in the homes earlier instead of having them out later. If we leave it till 8:00, they're not going home till 9:00. So, we're hoping that we could get them home by 8:00 now. On that same timeframe, Friday, October 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00, is we are going to be hosting a trick-or-treat event at the Police Department. So, it's going to be a drive-through trick-or-treat event. We want to make sure the kids this year have a great and safe time during trick-or-treating. So, we'll kick it off on Friday, and we'll be out with extra patrols out in the neighborhoods on Sunday also.
Wonderful, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Two requests here. I would like to see a list and amount associated with all of those who were fined for short-term, related to short-term rentals. And then, I would also like to see an agenda item at next week's meeting with a council vote on a 90-day suspension on fines and a termination of the ones that have already been issued and cancellation of hearing officer dates. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know earlier in today's meeting, there wasn't the appetite to support raising the tax levy to provide additional funds to the township regarding their reserves. I would like to see if there is a potential to bring back a proposal that the trustee board can review to see if we can support them in their efforts. Because although I did not support raising the tax levy, I do understand the good work that the township is doing. They've helped elderly residents in my district, as of recently, paying a constituent mortgage during this time, an 84-year-old woman off Reservoir. So, I definitely want to make sure that we can support them. And so, if there's any type of innovation that you can bring back that the trustee board can review, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would kind of agree with Councilmember Allen. We talked about the fact that, you know, a lot of what we're going to be doing is trying to decide the best way to spend this money for COVID relief. And I don't know if you all remembered that I mentioned early, early in one of the previous meetings that we do have to be prepared for emergencies. And it's really kind of hard to anticipate what might happen in the coming months. I would be afraid, I would be concerned if the township office could not meet its obligations with regards to COVID needs. And I don't think this situation's going to go away anytime soon. So, I just hope that we are compassionate and mindful as we proceed forward with regards to making those decisions. And just on a couple of other notes, along with what the chief was talking about, I just wanted to make a couple announcements for families who don't want to take their children out. St. Paul Baptist Church will be doing its annual Harvest Fest at Peoria High School on Sunday. And I do believe it's drive-by. So, I think they're just going to be handing out bunches of treats. You don't have to worry about coming in. And Roosevelt will be hosting Truck or Treat Friday, October 29th. So, that'll be from 4:00 to 5:00, so swing by. And the teachers and the staff will all be handing out goodies. And hopefully, you know, our young people will have enough alternative activities to go to so that they won't have to spend too much time walking around the streets going door to door. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, I was wondering if perhaps, as we're in the heat of the budget discussions, if we could have the department heads in council chambers. I would certainly think that we can be creative in our spacing and masking and whatnot. I just think it makes the conversation, takes it to a little more meaningful level. So, if you could look into that, if that would be a possibility, I would certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jensen?
I'm trying to find it here. The City Link is having public meetings for the public to give input on their new, I guess, strategic plan. And I'm trying to find when those are so I can announce them for the public. Hang on. I apologize, I thought I had it right here. It's City Link on the Move, public meetings regarding the proposed improvement plan that's planned for implementation in March of 2022. Details are found at www.citlinkonthemove.org. And I will see right now, if I click it on, and I can tell you, they're having meetings across the city to participate in their transit study. They'll be Monday, November 1st. It's virtual, so you can attend it through Microsoft Teams, either from noon to 1:00 or 5:00 to 6:00. And if you go to the City Link website, you can click on and register. There's another meeting on Wednesday, November 3rd, and that one is actually in person. And that's at the Peekem Public Library from noon to 1:00. And then, there is a meeting here on Wednesday, November 3rd. It's City Hall in Room 112. Is that right, from 2:00 to 3:00? Oh, no, I'm sorry, it looks like that's in East Peoria, at the City Hall in East Peoria, from 2:00 to 3:00. And then, another meeting will be November 5th at the Tri-County Urban League from 11:00 a.m. till noon, in person. Or again, on Wednesday, November 10th, in person at City Link from either 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. or 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Transit Center here downtown on Adams Street. I'll ask our communications director to also post those or a link on our website if anybody's interested in attending and giving input.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real fast, the men of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, Peoria Alumni Chapter, we are hosting our annual Fatherhood Breakfast this Saturday at Tree Win at 9:00 a.m. It is open to all fathers and father figures. And it's just a free event, open to the public to come. Bring your kids, bring those who you are a father figure to. And we just want to come together and just have a positive event and really just. And we just want to come together and just have a positive event and really just have some good community amongst ourselves. And so we really want to acknowledge the fathers and the father figures. So that's a free event, 9:00 AM this Saturday at Treewind Middle School. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Any more new business? Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Do you have any cards?
No, I have not received any cards.
Okay. Are there any, any individuals out there that want to address the council? Madam Clerk?
We are at executive session.
Madam Mayor, we have executive session pursuant to 5:00. ILCS 120 2C2 to discuss collective bargaining. 11 pending litigation and 21 closed session minutes.
Need a motion to go into executive session. Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Please cast your ballots. Passes unanimously, and I think I need a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Let's see. Paul, can you fix it? Please cast your ballots. Your service for adjourn.